Thursday, August 18th, the order. Can we begin with a roll call, please?
Where?
Councilmember Bertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Cherman.
Here.
Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Norton.
Here.
And Mayor Bortoff.
Here. Can we all stand for a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, do we have any additional materials received?
No.
Rich, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
We don't.
This is the public comment period where anyone from the public can come and address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. So anything besides the zoning ordinance, you may come up and speak. Is there anyone that would like to do that? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period, move to city council comments. Dennis.
I'd like to announce that the train to Christmas Town will be coming to Capitola for six weeks, starting in mid-November, and lasting through Christmas time.
Dennis. Five weeks.
Oh, five weeks. You cut a week off?
No, they did. Five weeks.
What was the discussion? Can you tell us just for two seconds what was it? Fifty-fifty, for and against, or?
No, it was, it was, there was only, the two representatives from Watsonville voted against it, but everybody else voted for it. And their reasoning was is that the train to Christmas Town right now is in Watsonville, and they're, and they're thinking that we're taking labor away from them. So part of the deal was is that the Iowa Pacific will actively recruit for employees from Watsonville area, and also do some type of free thing for the local schools there. So that was the trade-off. But it was, it was pretty unanimous. There was probably ten people there speaking against, most of them from Trails Now. There wasn't a lot of public participation.
Because it seemed like, you know, it seemed like a lot of people in Santa Cruz didn't like it. The neighbors didn't like it, and the train whistles and stuff. So then why would we do that here? But we decided to try it. So was there quite a bit of acceptance? They think it's gonna work, and they're, they're not gonna?
Yeah, what we're gonna do, we're gonna do, we're gonna, it's a trial run. This is the first time that we're doing it. There's concerns that, that putting a diesel locomotive may hurt any option of ever going to rail if they do that. So they're gonna do some, some major public relations in between, explaining that this is a one-time thing, that it is not the intent to put diesel locomotives on its rail line again. And that is the trip. There is no intent to put diesel locomotives. But they felt that, that in the Christmas spirit, some people took issues to religion of the way we voted, because they felt that if you do this for Christians, for Christmas, why not do it for, for Hanukkah and for the Muslim faith? And so it got spread out and dissipated there. Not that the argument is wrong, but that's, that was discussion. But overwhelming, the, the board went to, to making this happen. We'll see how it works out.
Any comments? Jacque, any comments?
I want to see the presentation that Sheriff Hart had put together on the 21st century policing. Quite inspiring. Also, the assistance participation group that helped put a report together, and very good points in that. And also like to note that Chief Rudy is very much a proponent of 21st century police reporting, policing.
Great. Michael?
No comments.
Okay. That brings us to general public hearings, which is the zoning code update. But before I turn it over to you, I just wanna have a little kind of disclaimer before we start tonight, because we made moderate progress at the last meeting, but I'd like to be hopeful to make more progress tonight. So as we go through the book, I just wanna remind everybody that we all have a representative on the planning commission who has spent an inordinate amount of time getting us this far. I think we've been following it. And I don't know that we need to discuss every item. And in that vein, just remember that this is still a meeting when we still have to follow Robert's Rules of Orders. And by that, a little excerpt, just pulled here, says that before any subject is open to debate, a motion must be made. So if someone has a problem with anything in the ordinance, they should make a motion that they'd like to open it up for discussion. Because we can't just have open discussions.
Why?
Because we follow Robert's Rules of Orders.
We follow the, not Robert's, the?
Rosenberg.
Rosenberg.
Rosenberg. And that's my, my, and I just copied it. And that's what it says. It's for any motion is made, a motion must be made by the member. So if there's something like, if you say you wanna change the height of a building to 27, say, "I'd like to change the height of the building, I'd like to make a motion to change that." Because we just can't go on and say, "Any item that comes up." And if somebody seconds that, then we will open it up and have a discussion on that. And other than that, we will just move through the book, assuming that there's no problem. But if there is a problem, you're more than willing to say, we just can't say, "Well, I'd like to see this." Okay? We really can't do that in this form. That's not how we decide things. So.
That's new.
Well, maybe it's not.
That's new. I mean, it's cumbersome. I don't, I don't mind doing that, but it's just cumbersome. It's very formal.
Well, I guess what I, I guess what I wanna do is if there's an issue, like I said, if we get to an item on, on, like I said, I'll just use height. Let's say setback. "I'd like to change setback from zero to five feet." You could just suggest that. And then, then we would be allowed to have a discussion on it. But we just can't openly discuss item after item after item.
That's a little problematic. I'll tell you why. It's just that some items we bring forward just for discussion with the council. If you want us to make a motion before we can bring it forward, it, you're not, you're not gonna get?
Well, I, what I'm doing is, I mean, this is the strict interpretation of the rule, okay? Which, which I'm following. And this was advice from the city attorney. So I'm just trying to make sure that we can move through this, because if there's something you just don't like, I mean, if you have a problem with something, if you say, "You know, I think we need to raise the height, you know, the sec, change the setback." Setbacks matter to you. You could do that up, and if somebody seconded it, then we would have a discussion. And then we would.
I disagree. I think you're, I think this is, this is a discussion forum, where we take an item, and any council member can bring it up for discussion, and that we should discuss the item. And if somebody felt strong enough to make that motion, great. But I don't think every item has to come forward in a motion.
Okay, let's do it this way. Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
A second.
Third.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. That motion carries four to one. I still will try my best to move this evening along.
And we'll, we'll help you. We'll do that.
Okay. All right. With that being said, Katie?
What page are we gonna start on?
Okay. We will be starting tonight on page 20-3. Tonight, we're here for the special meeting for the zoning code update. To date, there's, for the zoning code update, we've held stakeholder meetings, followed by the Issues and Options Report in 2015 that was reviewed by Planning Commission and City Council. The draft public release of the zoning code update happened on February 4. And since February 4, the Planning Commission has held 10 separate public hearings on the matter, and this is your second public hearing on the zoning code update. The new zoning code is divided into five parts, and also begins with a user guide. This evening, we'll be starting up where we left off at the last hearing, and that will be in Part Two, in the mixed-use zoning district. So one, I just, I'm gonna go over a couple of the changes that occurred. One was within the purpose statement for the mixed-use village, we're adding language for walkability. Another item came up for a discussion that, since we met last, I've met, I've had one-on-one meetings, which I have with several of you, and items of, that were requested to be discussed, I have put into slides this evening. So we're gonna take one step back to page 20-3, and this is the land use table in the mixed-use village and mixed-use neighborhoods. And Councilmember Norton requested that we discuss small mobile food vendors in the village, and whether or not that would be an appropriate use within the mixed-use village. So with that, I'll...
Turn it over to us to discuss that item?
Yes. Or if you'd like, I can continue and come back to things.
That'd be fine. Just wanna make one, one of the, seems there's only a few people in the public. I'm not gonna stop during the process to ask on each section if you would like to make a comment. But at any time, if you'd like to make a comment on anything we're discussing, raise your hand. Fair enough? Great.
Since, maybe, since I started this issue, maybe I can, or Katie, you wanna?
Do you wanna continue, or do you want?
I think this is, this is a good idea to discuss it.
Go ahead.
Okay. Fifteen years ago, I'm guessing, we allowed food vendors in the village. There were multiple different types. They all came through with permits and were approved. And for instance, there was a popcorn machine. There was a guy with a pushcart that sold popsicles. And, and in that time, we, we came into ordinance where no outside vendors were allowed at all. It was mainly pushed by businesses that felt that they were in competition with these vendors. For example, since we, as a council, or I sat here, the one vendor we've allowed has been Mr. Arthur's surfboard rental. We've allowed that in the village. We have not allowed any other things, although they do occasionally come to planning with applications for some type of outside vending. The two uses that I see, these are just two examples. One would be a popcorn machine. How wonderful that'd be. That's not really competing with any of the businesses. There's no businesses down there that produce popcorn. The other one would be, for instance, popsicles, a pushcart with that. I'd like to open the door to certain types of vending, and I think the caveat would be that they're not in competition with local businesses down there. And give a little color to the village, let some, some vendors like that operate there. I'm not talking about, talking about selling clothing. I'm not talking about selling life rafts. It's just making it feel more festive down in the village, and allowing a few vendors to come in.
I, I'm open to it. We did have somebody that we crafted a language so that they wouldn't sell anything that was in competition. That's exactly what the BIA said, the restaurants and the stores down there, that they didn't want the competition. And I'm trying to think what the fellow sold. It was something like hot dogs, something before the hot dog fellow was down there, so it wasn't in competition. But then he snuck in burritos, and so the Toro Bravo got mad. And then there was a lady, but anyway, so he only lasted one summer, and then we didn't renew it, or he didn't ever ask next year. And then Begonia Festival, there was a lady that asked us if she could sell little wreaths or some little handmade things that she made. And so we said, "Oh, sure." And then she was down there selling something entirely different, I think. So, you know, I'm willing, I'm willing to try it again. I think it might need a little work, and so maybe we'll put this on the back burner, and talk to the BA, and talk to some people about it, and see if we're gonna be a big firestorm. You know, we, we need to talk about that. But see, I wouldn't mind trying it again. It's, I, you know, I don't know whether it would work or not.
I have no problem myself. I'd ask for something similar, you know, that we bring this back.
I have no problem also. I do agree that we should talk with merchants and sort of try to come up with some guidelines, maybe. And another possibility would be, not every day, but, you know, certain occasions. And we do things on specials like art and wine, Begonia, you know, maybe not Begonia. You see, art and wine, stuff like that, we do have vendors down there selling things. So we already allow it, and in a way, it hasn't been problematic. So I'd like to expand that, actually. I'd like to see that work. So develop some guidelines, you know, what kind of occasions, not every day, you know, and also talk to BIA, because they're our partner downtown, obviously.
I remember the famous shaved ice hearings of 10 years ago, when we opened it up and we started this program, and we had every village merchant down here. And the next thing you knew, you know, three or four of them put signs up in their windows saying they sold shaved ice. I think this would be problematic unless the vendors were merchants from the village. If Toro Bravo had a stand out there that had burritos at the seawall, that might work out. If Suzas had an ice cream on a stick out there, that might work out. But if you let someone come in, and I don't care what you charge them for their permit, and you have them sell any food item, we're gonna be sitting here a long time that night. And we're gonna ultimately say no.
I know, because we, we were debating bottled water. They were gonna have bottled water, and then we said, "No, everybody sells bottled water down there. We can't even have that."
It's tricky. I like the concept. I mean, the flavor of it sounds great. I like the popcorn machine. And like I said, if it's not a village merchant in the, on the popcorn machine, or Mimi French, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a problem.
Yeah. Couple concerns. First of all, I don't know that this is where we should be discussing. This is something that sounds like it should be on an agenda item, that we publicize, and we bring in everybody. I would hate to discuss it here. My inclination is, I even remember when you brought up the surfboard, because there was a problem down there when I think Matt started selling bottles of water, little other things, and it caused a conflict that, other than surfboard rental. And it's just how, how much is this will lead to a bigger problem. More than willing to discuss anything, but I don't, I think that should be something on a separate day, and I'm not sure if it fits into what we're doing now.
It would be an amendment to the use table.
It's, it's art here.
Yeah. I mean, I would have to, I would have to have the BIA advertise this. I'd have to have input before we, I'd even...
I'm sorry, I disagree. BIA does not own the village, nor do the village merchants. It belongs to the community. So, so I'm gonna call a motion, I'm gonna make a motion.
Can I, can I, can I finish my comment? I just wanna finish my comment. Just like when we, when the, when the Polar Express was gonna run through Capitola, even though it wasn't our train, we called to have people come and weigh in on what they thought. Even though the decision might be inevitable, it's like, I feel like it would not be fair to at least advise the BIA that this is what we're considering, so they could show up. It's just transparency.
You're gonna have the same process. You're gonna, you're gonna have changes zoning ordinance right here, which the BIA is gonna weigh in on. That's what this process is about. This is not the final.
I think we should have, I think we should have a side item list going, and we could tentatively put it in here. But I think that there should be a public hearing on a number of items, because there's a few things we're gonna bring up over the course of the weeks with regard to zoning that are sensitive items. So in respect to the mayor's idea, I would propose that we keep a side list, this being the first one on that list, of items that we proposed to put in the zoning, that we can, that we can advertise and bring the public in on. And it might wind up being a six-item list. Who knows?
Who will be the keeper of the side list?
Well, it has to be the city manager. Because there, because I saw the fingers go pretty fast across there, and I think...
You may delegate, you may delegate it whoever you want. I just wanna make sure that on that list...
Right.
Is the vending. There's probably 50 things in this book that will involve the BIA. Is everything going on? I mean, we're gonna have public, we're gonna have public hearings on this thing.
Sensitive.
Sensitive items.
Public, sensitive public items, like, should there be dogs on the beach in this zoning? Then I would say that would go on the list.
That would be.
I'm sorry, that was a little facetious, but it's a dogs on the beach kind of an item.
It appears that way. So we have item number one on the list. So can we?
I'll be the keeper of that list.
You're the keeper of this. Thank you, Katie.
Way to, way to take it for the team. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm good. We won't give out your address.
Don't.
Yours.
Okay. Next. New height exceptions in the village. During the last meeting, there, it was brought up that the language for the up to 30 feet for habitable space with a minimum 512 roof pitch was worded incorrectly. We're going to scratch habitable space and say up to 30 feet for structures with a minimum 512 roof pitch. Also, there's the projections for non-habitable decorative features. And one that we started to talk about, but it was not conclusive, within the R1 zone, there's an allowance for plate height for a structure that does not exceed 22 feet. We started discussing this. There was no clear direction, so I was hoping to get clear direction tonight on, would you like us to add point number three, when the plate height of the structure does not exceed 22 feet? So that way, they could go up with a different form, an interesting roof that doesn't exceed 30 feet.
That's a question. So how do you arrive at 22 feet, and how would that work in this particular section?
The 22 feet is, you arrive at that by the, once you've put in your foundation for construction, and then you go to the top of your wall on your first floor, and then you build in the wall, the floor plate, and then the second wall, you'd arrive at 22 feet. If we wanted to increase that, this is, 22 is for the residential, so I copied it to here. One thing to consider is the fact that we're in a flood zone, and you may wanna have the top of plate within the village a little bit higher, but that is open to discussion. A second factor to think about in the village is the fact that the village is a little bit older, and typically, the older buildings didn't have extremely high wall plates, so this might be right on the money. And Councilmember Norton, as a designer, could probably weigh in on your typical wall plate height.
Yeah. Would you like to?
Yeah, I think, I think having an option here is a good idea. And I'm not sure 22 is really the right one, but whatever we come up with. And the reason is, is that if you, if you're gonna allow 33, what's gonna happen is, is you're gonna get, you're gonna get probably the lowest plate height that you can get, because what it allows for, it allows for more room into the third story. And, because you, you have to do a 5 and 12 plus pitch, pitch on the roof. And that, that pitch there is gonna determine as your building grows like this, what pitch you're gonna get. So probably, you're gonna pull the plate heights down. The other option is, is that when you have a plate height at 22 feet, that you can still do a lesser pitch roof line and stay, and probably get into the, to the, to the, to the existing 27. So it gives you a design option here that, that works. One of the problems we're gonna have here is, is that, and we've already seen it, is FEMA flood height in the village. And this is on San Jose, this take at the end of San Jose there, is nine feet in the air. So you cannot have a residential structure lower than nine feet in the air if it's rebuilt, or, I guess you could rebuild it, but you, a new, any new structure has to meet those criteria. Example, the lighthouse. That's the lowest floor. Everything that's downstairs in that light, in the lighthouse is either garage or a commercial. You're allowed to have commercial into it. We don't even know that the coastal commission is gonna allow us to have commercial downstairs. But it'll drastically change the visual character of our village if that, if that comes to pass. Because if you're not allowed commercial down in the lower, lower floor, everything is elevated to the second floor, and pretty, at that point, you don't have a village.
Are they talking about that?
What they're actually talking about is a pretty significant departure from existing regulations. FEMA requires you to elevate outside the flood zone, so you can still have a building in the flood zone as long as no residential uses could be inundated during a flood. Coastal Commission would like to scrap that and just say, "You can't build there, period. You need to set back from it. It's not a matter of elevating above it." So it's one of the many issues we have with some of the requested changes.
I don't think, I'll try and say this, still be respectful to that, to the commission, but I think it would be fruitless for us to take all the coastal commission's comments into consideration during our deliberations. We need to go forward and do what's right for Capitola, let the coastal commission rattle a saber as much as they want until it comes down to what gets approved.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. If, you know, we can't do this what-if, what-if, what-if. We, we have to sort of move forward and then see what happens, I guess.
And saying that nobody in the village can do anything of their homes, because the coastal commission has decided that because of sea level rise, they don't want anything done, is frankly ludicrous.
Agreed.
Well, or if they wanna come out with some rules, come out with the hard and fast rules that we'll all follow. But this is kind of in limbo land of not, you know, not knowing exactly what they're gonna come down.
How much is following the coastal act, which has nothing to do with sea level rise, or building, or repairing, or, you know, it could come down to, somebody doesn't get their roof repaired because the coastal commission says in a flood area because of sea level rise. Just foolish.
I'll give you an example, is that in the last 10 years, there've been a number of, of buildings that have been built that are three-story in the village, that, that meets, actually meets FEMA standards, but also meets the 27 height, foot height. But what you, what you end up with, and I've heard discussion with this council before, is you end up with flat roofs all over, all over the community. What the pitch idea does is it actually gives you an option to that flat roof, because you're building, you have to build your living area up into that, into the pitch of that roof.
I would move that we include all of these in the zoning update, because we've discussed the 22-foot plate height more than once. Gives them the ability for two stories or a story, plus a story out of the flood plain, and it gives us interesting roof lines and a more attractive village.
Do we, do we have any cases where we have big, high foundations? And we're not gonna count that, so, but if we...
It brings it over the gray, you do. Elevation.
My only concern is, I'm, when we had this discussion in the past, it was, my concern is not getting away from the flat roofs. And so I'm not sure if this is another item, if this becomes item number four, if this is incorporated, because I'm not sure the calculation on number one. But what I'm in favor of is not allowing the plate height to exceed 27 feet. Would it be redundant to put that in there, that plate height may not exceed? Still okay with the height, and I'm not sure if the five and a half pitch is saying that same.
Are you ready for a 35-foot-high building? That's the question.
No, there's still a maximum. There's still a maximum number, but I just wanna say that the habitable area cannot exceed 27 feet.
Well, then, then you're gonna go back to Dennis', is if you're, if you're okay with a lot of flat roof structures, you're gonna see those plates go to the maximum, and you're gonna have a two-and-12 roof.
Well, that's what I'm not...
If you brought the plate height up to 27 feet to get three stories in, you would essentially create a way to get around the 512 roof pitch. It would, the pitch would become less.
I'm not...
Because you'd only, only have three feet to work within if they took advantage of the 27-foot plate height.
Yeah. Let's, for example, if we can just go back to like the, the lighthouse building. I believe that's higher than 31, or 32, or even 33. Might even be closer to 34, 35.
Because of the lighthouse structure itself was an accessory, non-habitable architectural detail.
Feature.
Right. Well, what I'm saying is, is that I support that building, and in this ordinance, that building would not meet this criteria, because it still says up to 30 feet.
But there's more, there's more language about the architectural elements, you know, chimneys and...
The way this is written...
We should clarify that, so point one is up to 30 feet. The second does not, does not have a limit, so it doesn't, you know, it doesn't say up to 30 feet. The third point, I was thinking that this would have a limit of 30 feet as well, it's just a different way of getting a roof. And then so we should clarify that in the motion, if you'd like it to be up to 30 feet when the plate height of the structure does not exceed 22 feet.
So you were thinking in item three, that it could be an eight-and-12 roof, and because they would stop the plate at 22, they'd still be able to have the eight-and-12, but not exceed 30 feet?
Mm-hmm.
Which is fine, because I'm, I'm just about the architecture is all that matters. Just trying to, you know, I, I'm not trying to get rid of the three-story building, just trying to allow them, and maybe the number is not, maybe 31 isn't enough. If it was a three-story building, and it had a five-and-12 roof, and, you know, I don't know if we can calculate what that would be. Would it be 33? Would it be 34?
Depends on the width of the building.
Right, I know, as I'm saying, so it's hard to do that with a rule.
Well, I think you could still do what you're suggesting. For instance, as long as you stay under the 27 feet, which is the present, you can do a flat roof and build that. And actually, what you'd have to say is, if you're going to do a second-story plate height, you have to say 26 feet, because they have to have a roof structure on top of it. So if you say, if you stayed with the zoning, say, the maximum is 27 in the village, which we're saying, and that if you wanted to build a flat roof up there, you could build up to 27 and have a flat roof. But you can't go above that. But with a, but if you do something at 22 feet, which is a lower plate height, you're allowed to go up to 30 feet, as long as you're using a 5 and 12 pitch. And what that does, it does this to this.
I got that. And I think what Katie just said is, on item two, the projection doesn't have a limit. You could build a three-story building at 27 feet, and you could put a projection device on, a structure on there that could be 10 feet tall if it was approved through the permit process.
Through the permit process.
Right. And what I'm saying is, is that I don't want to stop the three-story building. I just want to, I don't want it to be flat. I want to offer incentive to put some kind of a roof on there, other than a 2 and 12.
And if you want the three-story building, then you have to speak to 27 feet. You can't get three stories in 22.
No, that's why I wanted the plate height. I wanted to make sure that there was no inhabitable space above 27. Because that's what's existing now. That's it. People can build, it's right here, 27-feet flat roof. And what I want to discourage, or I want to encourage is, go ahead and build your three stories, but put a roof on it.
Then it's number three, but a 27-foot plate height, not 22.
Could I make a point of clarification? So within our citywide standards, if you'd like to go to page 48-2, there's a table that talks about allowed maximum projections above the height limits. And for non-habitable decorative features, there's actually a max there of six feet for all other zones. We could add that, we should actually put that here so there's no confusion. But, so, that would be beyond the 27 feet. That'd be an additional six feet for the number-two projections of non-habitable decorative features.
Right, so we had a 27-foot, and we allowed a six-foot structure, our limit would actually be 33 feet.
33 feet.
But we're mixing issues here. We're mixing architectural elements with the roof structure.
I was just clarifying, not mixing, because we haven't dealt with the 27-foot yet.
So, or another suggestion would be to cross out number two and let the citywide standard apply. That's, you know, within the allowed projections above height limits, that's a citywide standard that you would be allowed to have a non-habitable decorative feature that goes up to six feet. I think it'd be more correct to remove it from the central village standards because it, this applies later on. And just be very clear for the height exceptions in the central village that are outside the citywide standards. One is for the 30 feet with a minimum 512 roof pitch, or the other option would be with a plate height.
Would a roof structure be considered a decorative?
No.
No, no. And it's more clear in 48-2, on page 48-2, that non-habitable decorative features, including spires, belfries, copulas, domes, and other similar architectural elements. So, more descriptive.
So can we establish that we want to be able to have a three-story building in the village and have a 27-foot plate height? And maybe we can get agreement on that, and then move forward on what we want the roof to be able to be? Because perhaps 27-foot plate height and then non-habitable roof structure, non-habitable space roof structure.
I thought we weren't going to three stories in the village.
We're there.
Wow.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, what we allow is three-story flat tops. And if people were to allow to continue to interpret our rule, we would, they would tear them down and build three-story flat tops, so we would lose all the... My suggestion is, I don't think the other three or four feet is going to hurt the architecture, as long as its architecture not, I just, I want, I'm trying to discourage the flat top.
Does number one do that for you?
Well, my fear is that at 27 feet with a, if we did a 4 and 12 roof and it was, you know, 20 feet wide, that's going to be, what is it, five feet tall?
You're going to have it all at 27-foot, you're going to have 28-foot buildings with 27-foot plate height plus the roof structure, flat.
Which would have to take it to 32. It would have to be 32 or 33 to allow for even a 4 and 12 or a 5 and 12. And just trying to make sure there's architecture on top of that flat top. I want, it's like, someone might just build a flat top, they could continue to do that. But we would encourage them, if they wanted to put architecture and put a roof, they could be allowed to go up to another number. And I'm not sure how to word that, but that's the intent. And it may not be 30, it would obviously be more than 30. But right now, what you just said is that the spires and the structures are up to six, so we've essentially said it's okay to go to 33.
Well, architectural elements.
With architectural elements.
Those are just architectural elements, so that's nothing habitable. That isn't where people go up and do them.
I didn't say habitable. The habitable area has to stop at 27. I'm not trying to change that. Nobody can go with, the plate line would be the habitable area.
Well, then you've done it. If we just say the plate height, maximum 27 feet, and then just not put a maximum height, because nothing above that 27 feet can be habitable, then they can then put a roof on it.
Go in under, yeah, and under this section, they could put the decorative elements if they wanted to.
Or they could put a 6 and 12 roof.
Maybe not six, but if we say up to a 5 and 12 roof, will it be allowed?
That becomes, I'll defer to Dennis on this, because it, from what I've seen, the 5 and 12 can be, depending on the shape of the house, as undesirable as a flat top. You know, there are some places that are narrow enough where a 6 and 12 roof would probably architecturally look better. I'm not an architect.
Would it help to look at some, look at the village, look at some pictures of the village right now, and Google Earth, and go down the street, and let's take a look at some of those roofs, or?
I'll tell you, the Six Sisters is a 12 and 12.
Right, right.
Superintendent's building is probably about a 10 and 12. See that there? There's a, it's 45 degrees, it's 12 and 12.
12 and 12.
And that's, those things there, I think are just over 30 feet.
And I don't think, I'm not sure that we want the whole village to be that high. That was the discussion before.
We have residents on the first floor, is what we have to discourage. Because in the FEMA rules, take away that first floor, and that's all, and if you wanted two stories, that's all you would net.
If you, if you really want to get away from the flat roofs on the second or third story, whatever it is, giving somebody incentive to put a pitched roof like you see right there onto their house, it's worth giving them three feet. Then you're going to have a variety of rooftops in the community.
Without the dormer.
Without the dormer.
We're eliminating the habitable space.
As a suggestion, this...
Is that habitable? That might be storage up there.
The dormer, it's in the village, it's habitable.
One suggestion, and I'm not sure that I'm checking all the boxes with this, but it sounds like you could have a two-part height limit in the village. Is, number one is, it's 27 feet. Or a 22-foot plate height will let you go up to, say, 30, 31 with your habitable space, provided that, all of that is occupied within the roof structure. So basically, you keep the existing rule as it is. So you'll still get some flat tops. And I don't know necessarily that all flat tops are ugly. It's the variety that you're after. But then you provide another option on the table, that if someone wants to go 22, they can go up above the 27 feet, have habitable space up there. And so then each individual project is making that trade-off. Does that, does that make sense? And does that accomplish what folks are talking about?
Let's go back down to Capitola Avenue and look at some other buildings.
Go to the apartment across from the rotani, just so you can show what we're trying to avoid. Because even when you look at the new buildings, like across from the market, the newest building there was built, was three stories with a flat top. And as these buildings, as the old ones are, there you go. That's what we want to avoid.
Right, that complies with FEMA floodplain regulations.
Totally FEMA, yeah.
And our zoning code.
It's better since they painted it.
You're an optimist.
They more than painted it, they did significant work on it.
It's like, I'm willing to give up more height if there was some kind of architecture on that, that's all.
But what it does is, if you, if you have a maximum height of 30, and you only get to have 30 if you have a pitched roof on there, it really, it really, what it does, you're saying, the third story has to go in the roof line. It's only, that's the only way you can do that. And that gives you the variety.
I think that's where you're trying to go.
If that's habitable, then that's a bonus. Yeah.
So you just can't attach it to a plate line, now, that's the only thing.
Yeah, that, okay, to give you an example there, that's 27 feet tall and it's three stories.
But it's flat, it's flat.
It's huge.
It's a flat roof on top.
Yeah.
There's little, you know, there's pitched roofs around it, but there's a middle part that's flat. That's the only way you could possibly build that.
First floor is all garage.
It's all garage. So that's FEMA floodplain right there, so.
The thing is, is that is currently allowed in our ordinance, there's no change there. That, we're not, what I'm trying to do is saying, look, rather than build that, I'm going to offer you some extra footage in height if you try to put something on top of it that looks pleasing to the eye, instead of just a flat roof. Is that a 27-foot building?
That's 27. I'll tell you, if I would have had the option that they're giving me here on that, what I would have done is, is I would not have, the whole third story on that would be up in the roof line. You'd see a pitched roof line all the way through. And you'd be able to put a smaller room, but a room up in there. And you wouldn't have that boxy, flat roof on there.
Even on that roof there, if you were to put a 4 and 12 on that going across, which I think would be better. It's probably about 12 to 15-foot wide. The height would be four feet at the center, instead of 27, it'd be 31. Which is, which is what I'm advocating for, that I don't think there's a problem with that, rather than, but it's not flat.
You would have to have like 33 feet then, probably. But yeah, you can do that.
I know. Well, that's what I'm advocating.
Well, what I want to be cautious about is not, is just not seeing a 33-foot building here, next to another one, next to another one, next to another one, next to another one, next to another one. And then we'd really change the look of the village, and it's higher, bigger, and people are going to say, "That's too much."
That's why the plate height's important. And I think we're back to the 27-foot plate height, and then they can take the roof up, up to a certain pitch beyond that.
That's habitable.
It's non-habitable.
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 There's no habiting above 27 feet.
Basically, what you're looking at is that building with a nicer roof.
That would be lovely. I mean, I think it's a nice building anyway. I think it's very nice.
Stephanie, the thing is, because of what's there, you know, there's existing flat tops, it's just, we don't want to continue to encourage people to tear down that house on the right, put in a three-story building that's 27 feet tall, because they want three stories. Because like Dennis says, first floor is going to be garage to satisfy FEMA and parking. Now they have two 9-foot floors, it's 27 feet, and we lose all the architecture in the village. So the reward for the six-foot for the lighthouse or structure of that type, or up to four or five feet for a pitch.
Are people even doing flat roof buildings anymore, very much?
You can just go right across from the market, they have brand-new one across from the market.
This isn't totally flat, it's only fat flat, I won't say.
But I mean, is it a preferred building method?
Well, you get more mass that way.
Yeah.
Because there's no floor erosion.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right.
So what you do is, you, if you're going, if you wanted to go three stories, you can actually do that. But you're going to have, you're going to have one floor at 7'6" plate line, plate height, which is lower than 8 feet.
See, Stephanie, this one here, that's what they're doing. That's what you're going to see from now on. They're going to tear down the house, they're going to put their three stories, they got their garage, their two floors, and there's nothing on the top. And I would have given that guy, I would have given that guy four feet to put a 4 and 12 roof on it, just so it didn't look flat.
Actually, that's the one on the corner, I don't think it looks too bad.
But just, this is what we're talking about. If you imagine, if every house is torn down, is maximized, that's what we're telling them, we want them to build.
I have a question, Tony. So what we're really looking at, to me, is how the whole village looks. Okay, so if there was a string of flat roofs, we wouldn't want that. But if someone came to us with a project, and we're talking about two different ways to look at how to do the roof, if there was adjacent flat roofs, we'd say, "Okay, now because of that, you're going to have to come up with a gable roof," or something like that, to offset things. So in other words, sort of trying to fit in so that you have some variety, it actually dictates that you can't do flat, but you can do a gable roof.
But we can't really tell people how to design their house.
Well, that's what we're doing here.
Can we just put plate height 27 feet, pitched roof allowed, up to 33 feet?
That's the will of the council, we certainly have it.
Yeah, I'm asking.
No habitable space in the roof area?
No habitable space. Plate height 27, pitch roof allowed, up to 33.
I don't have a problem with that, it's pitch roof.
Have to think about it.
Okay, and then keep in mind that we are already allowing 6 feet for spires and lighthouses and everything else.
And what's the height of the superintendent's building? It's over 30, isn't it?
I think, I believe it's about 31 feet.
Yeah, it's right at 30, I think, yeah. You get that, Ed, with not quite the mass, if you go back to their proposal where they're saying that, that... 22 and, and you can create, first, go back to that house again. Picture that with the roof pitching down on both sides, the window, one window's in the middle in the front, that would still be there, but you would take that pitch and come down both sides, which you would be, that's probably right at 27, so three feet taller, you'd be three feet taller. So they could have done a pitched roof on the top of that, but it gives them more volume in there.
The higher than 22-foot plate height.
To get them to do that, you have to offer incentive. And as they start losing the footage in the corners and making it less functional, they don't have the incentive to do that, they'll still just build a flat top. If they're not penalized for the roof, they're more encouraged to do that.
I don't have a problem with your motion, if you...
It wasn't a motion, I can't think of a motion.
It wasn't a motion.
I mean, I was suggesting...
I think the idea is 27-foot plate height, and then up to a 5 and 12 on top of that.
And a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
I'm not going to vote for it, because I'm not sure what, how I feel about that.
Point of clarification on habitable.
Are you okay with the other exception where Katie mentioned it was 27 feet with structure items going up six feet?
I wasn't crazy about that last time, it came around.
Okay.
But, you know, it can make it interesting, so I'll think about it and talk to you about it.
There's no habitable space in the roof area? Storage?
No.
Just to point out, you know, that could create some enforcement problems. You know, oftentimes, somebody will come in, they'll show that it's not going to be habitable space, and lo and behold, there's room there, and that's what it becomes later on. Very hard to monitor and enforce, it's...
Right, but it is, it's not hard to enforce it if you see that roof and there's dormers and windows in the dormers. You know, that's what I'm trying to get away from, over-massing that simple roof.
We can't, it can go more of a three-story anyway. We can hold it that. So we could hold that. So the only place that would be above that, the 30 feet, would be the original, just the original.
I just don't want the whole village above 30 feet. You know, the whole village. You know, some buildings here and there are fine, and I don't know how you get that, if you...
Well, just by the nature of what's existing, I don't see...
Depends on turnover and depends on...
See the house to the left of this one?
Yeah.
If he falls, that's, I think that's a two-story. I think what it is, is what you're seeing, there wasn't room to put a room up in. I think what that is, is I think it's fault, it's a clear story. I could be wrong, but I think that's what it is. Look at the, look at a clear story over the door. It'd be clear up in the joist, you know, if that was the case.
Yeah.
I could be wrong.
There's a motion and a second, I'd rather have you feel good about it.
Oh, I'm not sure, it's all right.
Doc, can we feel that?
Well, I like to have a little architectural feature on the top. That's what I like, but I'll vote for this, that's what everyone thinks would work.
Why do you want a habitable structure on top?
I've seen a lot of interesting features like that. When I was in Paris, they were all like that. When I was in Mexico, they were all like that. Those, you know, reduced roof, you know, with the gable roof or whatever you want to call it.
And tiny rooms upstairs.
Yeah, tiny rooms upstairs, I actually rented one when I was in Paris. Then we're looking at the fourth story.
Right, we're not trying to create a four-story.
Well...
You get what you want, Josh, you get what you want with this. You do.
Yeah, no, I can see that, I get. I just don't... The other option, the other option is the 22-foot plate height, and you allow habitable space in the roof line above.
Yeah, that's the one I kind of like.
I think that, I think that sounds like that would work.
Can we put our foot onto a number?
Could you go higher than 22? 24? At the same time, no, I'm just trying to get it...
Well, the plate height is setting the mass of the building.
Okay.
We just don't want the village to be overbuilt in the future.
Stephanie, I think what I'm just trying to avoid is, is I see that, what I'm watching recently is they're tearing them down and they're building those.
Right.
And the more flat tops we put, we lose that character. I have to commend the lighthouse building, because at least it was different. And I want to get incentive for that. And so this is what I'm afraid of. Because this is what they can do, and they're going to want that third story. They're not going to build a two-story.
Does Google Earth have the new building next to the lighthouse up yet? Or is it too recent?
Probably not, I'll check.
How tall is that? That's probably 25.
It's 25.
Oh, yeah. It's only two.
It's only a single-story living.
No, 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 it's got two stories.
It's two stories, but it's all garage below, and it's...
Garage and two stories above.
No, one.
One.
There's a pretty obvious stairway in that.
It just goes to the second floor, though, Mike. It just goes from the garage level to the second floor.
So there's our tallest building in the village right there?
No.
Did they get any variances? Did they get any variances?
Can't get down, yeah.
A new structure.
It's only, it's only...
Right down there.
It's on the other side.
It's a living? Yeah, it's there, it's built, you can see it.
Yeah, can you get, can you get down that street?
I can't, there's no...
How about the next street?
What it is, I'll tell you what it is. What it is, I'll tell you what it is, it's a garage below, it's a garage below, and it's one-story living above.
There we go.
You could. See, right, see, and what you're looking is a clear story and a second story.
Yeah, that's not, that's not tall.
See, see the one, this side of that? That actually has a staircase that goes up to a roof deck up on top, and that's why that is as tall as it is. Yeah, that, that blue one, the blue one right there.
So there's a deck up there, huh?
There's a, there's a deck up on top, so that's two stories with a deck on top.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so I'm still gonna call the vote on what we have, and that, if I read that back, that was twenty-seven foot plate height, up to thirty-three with a pitched roof.
And no habitable space.
No habitable space above the plate line. Is that, that's what we had said? Clear?
Clear.
Clear. All in, we'll do a roll call.
Okay, Councilmember Jimmy?
Aye.
Councilmember Betraya? Councilmember Harland?
No.
Councilmember Doran?
Aye.
Mayor Ford.
Hi, that carries four to one. Okay.
Okay, so I'm just gonna reinforce this one, so up to thirty-three feet is a maximum height, the maximum plate height can be up to twenty-seven feet, there must be a pitched roof, and no habitable space above the plate line.
No, I, wait, let's go back here again, because what it does is it actually, the plate height is, is not the top of the plate, in other words, because you always have to have rafters riding over it. So the, the plate height should be twenty-six feet, if you're gonna do that, because you're gonna have eight inches of rafter coming over there, so the roof is gonna be eight inches higher than, than the plate height. So if you go twenty-seven plate height, you got a twenty-eight foot house that you're starting with.
I'll accept that friendly amendment, 'cause that's correct, strictly.
So it'd be twenty-six foot.
And still not to exceed thirty-three feet max.
Correct.
And there's no minimum roof pitch?
Architecture, it's architecture, it's whatever the design is, it, it could be just sloped one way, if that's how they wanna do it. The idea is for it not to all look the same, that was the intent, isn't that what you said, not to look the same?
Okay, so next, moving on, so from pages twenty-six to twenty-ten, there are new design standards for the mixed-use village, and these were incorporated from the village design guidelines. One discussion item that was requested is to add a design guideline for garbage and recycling to be screened from the public right-of-way, so we can discuss that, but also if there are any other amendments requested in terms of these design guidelines that are now in the code. And, Councilmember Harland had brought up the garbage and recycling.
What, what was that, what was that number? Let's see.
Page twenty-ten, and the previous comment was that we should probably have.
Twenty-nine, my comment was on five C on that page, on twenty-nine, five C, it says loading areas, I just wanted to add recycling, loading and recycling areas, so that, that's very clear. 'Cause we had, it hasn't happened for a while, but we had a few applicants that came in before, and they forgot to screen their recycling area.
And staff would suggest creating a separate item as eight for garbage and recycling buffers, and that we would use similar language to, to require them to be screened, but that we shouldn't place them under the parking and location buffers, 'cause they might get lost in that section, they're not quite appropriate, so to create number eight at the end for garbage and recycling buffers.
Is that saying the same thing, is that?
It is saying the same thing, it's just not listed under parking.
Okay, okay, so anybody have a problem with that?
No, that's good.
Michael?
Good.
Good job, question?
Yeah, I was thinking on page twenty-six or forty.
Oh, let me see, so we're good with that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Next item?
Yeah, yeah, so in terms of primary entrance, I find some interest in having a possibility of side entrances.
What page you on?
Uh, page forty.
Forty?
Read that number, okay.
Forty, we're not there yet.
Twenty-six.
Oh, twenty-six.
Twenty-six, so in terms of building orientation, one of the reasons why I think that is, you could have a side alley, and things could be off of that, we do have some buildings right next to the superintendent's building, actually, there's a, a building that has some side alley entrances, but also it offers some possibility of windows or ways to look into the commercial area without an entrance, and then a side alley to get in. So that little cafe actually has a side alley entrance, as well as a front entrance off of monitoring, but if that wasn't available, the side alley entrance seems to work, they have seating there, right? So I just wanna put that in as a possibility, that's all. At least open it for discussion.
So that's excluding the village, so you wanna do that on, on Capitola Road, or Capitola Avenue, or these, these will be design standards for other, other areas?
In general, I don't have any problem with side entrances, I'm not sure why they have to all be front entrances, that's.
Why do we have to put anything where the entrances are?
Yeah.
The village is oriented to the street, we don't have to tell people where their entrances are?
Well, that's sort of my point, yeah, that's sort of my point.
Put it where they want.
Is that redundant?
Is that, well.
I'm just basically, for discussion, I'm just, don't quite understand why we have to specify all entrances have to be on the street.
'Cause it's in some manual somewhere, that's why.
Yeah, Ben, any?
If I could jump in here on this, so, this was included to sort of encourage the maximum amount of activity along the street front edge, so it says the primary entrance needs to be from the street or from a sidewalk adjacent to the building, with the intent being that we wanna maximize the amount of that activity along the primary street front edge.
Ben, are you, we're not talking about village, right, we're just talking outside the village?
No, we're talking actually only about the village.
Only village.
Page twenty-six.
Twenty-six, item one, building orientation.
The bottom of the page.
Bottom less.
What, what does it say opposite? General design, the following standards apply to all new buildings and additions with a MU-v zoning districts, excluding the village.
The residential overlay.
Oh, okay.
My, my point basically is that if looking at that particular lot, and the buildings surrounding it, the architect decided that there was some benefit in having side entrances, and maybe there's, you know, businesses going back, or maybe there was a residence in the back, and they wanted to use an alley, I've seen that already a couple of times, so I just didn't wanna have that possibly excluded. So, just for everyone's consideration, I think older buildings have things off of alleys and little walkways, the newer buildings in general, I believe, do just front entrances.
Well, you could take El Toro Bravo, I mean, they, they have their primary entrance on the front, but everybody uses the back door, so.
Yeah, a lot of times I can't even go in the front.
Can you tell me where, I mean, did the planning commission come up with that, is it, is it a planning procedure, do you normally do that, I mean, why, why do we?
I think normally you do wanna encourage your main entrance to be visible from the street, it's more active, you can go from business to business, window shop, I'm having a hard time imagining too many places other than the cafe that, that would come into play. One easy suggestion might be to change it from building shall be oriented towards to should.
Let me ask, I'm trying to think of that, that house that the French had on Long Way.
Right.
Is that oriented towards the street, or is that oriented towards Long Way, and where is that primary entrance?
It's, it comes around the corner, it doesn't face, there's a deck there that you go on.
I'm trying to think if the pri, because when there was a shop, a dress shop.
Dennis, you're talking about French's mom's house, but one in the front that, that used to be a.
A dress shop.
Space was facing.
Front, but isn't the entrance on, on Long Way now?
Well, they changed it into a residence, that's why.
Yeah, but the entrance was on Monterey.
Right, the entrance was on Monterey.
Right, but it's not now.
I, I like yours, Richie, you just say shall, it, it, we don't have to say it must.
Please it open.
Yeah, it gives flexibility, tells them in most cases, that's the way we want it, and certainly would give decision-makers the ability to say, no, change the entrance, but if there's good reasons not to, it's not a hard and fast rule.
Are the, are the village's design standards just gonna disappear?
That was the direction we received during issues and options, was, they're badly outdated, we just throw those in the trash and pull.
Okay.
A lot of the important standards, put them in the zoning code.
Okay.
The discussion maker is okay with where we ended it, shall.
Okay, and shall, should.
Okay.
Okay, and the other was okay as well, the garbage and recycling?
Right, you're okay with the garbage recycling, we incorporate all that?
I think that's an excellent idea, I know various people have brought that up.
And garbage, garbage in the village has always been an issue, and, and if we ever see a redesign of buildings, I think that there needs to be, for instance, Paradise Beach Grill probably does the best, because they tucked it into the building, not that it's the perfect place, but the, the options where we've given to them, such as Zelda's, horrible, Nexito Bravo, horrible, where you have exposed, so that, that somehow we should tell village revitalization, if there is, is that type of thing, that, that, the, the, the garbage container should be put out of sight, whether it's tucked into the building or a separate enclosure to have that.
Well, if we could get the mercantile to put in a, a couple of dumpsters there for the merchants, you know, and have them all pay him a little bit, that's a great open lot that has an area that's available, and if they would all pull together and pay him a little bit, and just rent his space, and create, that's a great space for garbage containers.
He's got one back there, and he could, he could probably expand that, yeah.
Can we, you know, like, when Paradise had the fire, and we made them put the enclosures for the equipment on the roof, that's now part of our policy, that anybody that requires some kind of a permit, they must do that, or how did, how did we enforce that?
I think that was through the building permit, I, I don't know the reason behind it, I imagine it was a code requirement, I could follow up on that, but I don't know.
Well, I mean, we're trying to go in that direction to hide all that stuff.
Yeah.
And so my, as, as Dennis Brevler was saying with Paradise, Paradise encloses their garbage, could we require that somebody on major remodel or any kind of a deal, we could, that they would need to enclose their garbage?
I think we could, earn for discretionary permit, we'd have that ability.
Just like we did for the fire, because of the fire, we were able to enforce.
Well, that one I think was a building permit requirement, again, I'm not certain.
Okay, but with garbage?
And if you're gonna do a major remodel, sure, we could open the door and make them improve existing deficiencies, whether it be garbage or something else.
Is, am I jumping around, or is that someplace, is that, is that applicable to this area, or?
It's citywide, because it's also in our design permit requirements, so it's one of the criteria that we look at in the design permit, so.
Okay.
It's gar, it's the placement of garbage and.
Although I, I think where you're going, it would, it sort of depends, you know, do you want to have that requirement everywhere in town, or is it more of a village center?
I'm in the village, I'm focusing on, Dennis, we have a problem with the, with the garbage, and if somebody was gonna do a major remodel, we'd say part of here has to be to enclose your garbage, it's your problem.
Well, behind the gate or something, out of sight, well, we already have an ordinance that you can't put your trash bins in your front yard, we already have that.
I'm talking about enclosing, I mean, somehow maybe build them into the structure, okay, or.
Well, that's, I think it's different with residential than it is with commercial.
No, just in the village, just in the village.
Okay.
I have no problem, I think it would add to the.
Yeah, I don't care whether it's in the building, or just out in the parking lot, but to have it screened in a dedicated area.
It doesn't necessarily mean to be built in the building, but enclosed, right.
Either way.
So implying that, implying that to the whole city, is, is that we should have a requirement that, that all trash have, be, be in some type of enclosure, we probably already have that, don't we?
We do, and we were just talking about that here, with that cover Zelda's, and I said, no, because they're, they're enclosed right now, it's just on the sidewalk, basically, that, that doesn't work, right?
The one that, that doesn't conform is.
Well, if they had the.
El Toro Bravo, where everybody uses those containers right down the side of the building there, you know, that, that doesn't comply, but, but let's, let's take a, a new residential high-density development, that type, we would require trash enclosures for that, we would require for any, any new commercial establishments, is that correct? They would be enclosed, they're not, not open, is that true?
Screened, but not.
Yeah, they all have to be out of public view, even residential, I mean, they don't have to have cover, they put them in the garage, put them in the backyard, but can't be visible, commercials do have to have an enclosure.
Okay, so we're covered for the rest of the city, then?
Yeah, for stormwater regulations as well.
Okay. Does that take care of our village then?
Yes, so we will add to it that, one, that they need to be screened, but also designed into the architecture of the building, or into the site and architecture of the building.
Our flavor was, we meant that they were enclosed in some way, shape, manner, form.
Yep.
However you wanna word that.
But you would like it, in Zelda's case, like inside of the building, not out exposed into the sidewalk.
You know, I guess it would lead us to, I think if there was some major remodel that was proposed for Zelda's, somehow they'd have to incorporate.
Okay, but we'll work on that and present you some revising.
Okay, but I, I think the, the direction we wanna go is, let's start, if we're doing this, it's like, if you're gonna do something big, close your garbage in.
No, no trash enclosures fronting on the major road, how's that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Shall be located at the side and rear buildings, and.
Where does that take us?
So next, we, one thing that changed during the planning commission review is that for special projects that are required to have community benefits within our general plan, originally the village theater site and the increased floor area ratio and height along Forty-first Avenue were included in the individuals within the central village zone, as well as the CC zone, we've moved those, so for the increased height and floor area ratio standards, they're within the community benefits section of the code, so that has been moved, you'll see a big red line of things crossed out for the theater sites, I'm just highlighting that, next, we'll move, so we'll get there, when we get to citywide, we'll go over the theater site and what the community benefits are required, and the additional height and floor area. Next, we'll jump into the mixed-use neighborhood, mixed-use neighborhood's found on Capitola Avenue and Capitola Road, and one new thing that came into being is new site requirements, so in the mixed-use neighborhood, currently there's no minimum lot size, no minimum parcel width, and no minimum parcel depth, we went through, and we GIS'd all the neighborhood commercial sites, and the majority, leaving out less than a dozen sites, would fit within these minimum parcel width of forty feet and a minimum parcel, actually, minimum parcel width of forty feet and a minimum parcel depth of eighty, except there are those properties across the street from us, here at City Hall, that are substandard, so that the depth isn't as deep in the neighborhood. But this new minimum would not create many non-conforming lots, so the planning commission chose to adopt this new standard, so I'm just highlighting it as a change from the old code to the new.
Okay.
Next, we'll talk about new setback standards, and this is really to emphasize walkability along our neighborhood, our mixed-use neighborhoods, so again, Capitola Avenue and Capitola Road, specifically, the front yard setback has changed, its previous requirement was a fifteen-foot landscape strip, and landscape strip was not defined in the code, the new standard is a zero foot from the property line minimum, or ten feet from the curb, whichever is greater, and a maximum of twenty-five feet, so the structure doesn't get too far away from the street. What this looks like is, on the bottom of the slide, I show you a property, and you can see in gray is the street, here's the curb in this example, you'd be required to have a ten-foot setback from the curb, and your building would be setback ten feet. Many of the right-of-ways are not fully developed, all the way across their full width in Capitola, so in this scenario, we'll, we'll show you a curb within the street, typically you'll find a sidewalk within that extra area, or even just public parking will occur, and a lot of depot hills like that, and in this scenario, there's your ten-foot requirement, so the structure can come right up to the property line, and again, this is to require that adequate sidewalk is built, or has the potential to be built. And in a real-life practice, this is across the street, here's your curb, we'll say that's where the property line is, and so the new requirement would require this building to be, you know, would allow for a wider sidewalk in the future, if they were to tear down the site and redevelop, it would be setback an additional, we'll say, four or five feet in this example, so that was just to make sure there were no questions regarding that new standard.
My concern about this was that we have enough room for some, a little bit of landscaping, and I wasn't sure with the ten feet, what we were gonna get, but that's, that's, that's very clear there, I just want some bushes, or a street tree, or some flowers, or something to soften the, the, these, these streets that we have, they're small lots, and I know that, I would rather have more setbacks, but I think this'll work okay, this is, this is okay, and just that, that's my only concern, is I just want some, 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 even with the drought, some drought-tolerant plants there to soften it and make it look more attractive, rather than just concrete sidewalk building.
Thank you for the visual.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, okay.
Doc, question?
No, no question, I just like the idea that gradia will end up towards more of a walkability, you know, so in terms of commercial activity, you know, people walking around, looking for stores to visit, having a narrow, as opposed to a big one, I'd go for the big one. Sounds good.
Okay, wanna move on? Move on, okay, within the mixed-use neighborhood development standards, this is similar to the central village, how we had some design guidelines, there's new standards for building orientation, for residential transition and daylight planes, requiring if you're a commercial building that backs up to residential, you're required to make sure there's an adequate daylight lane, parking locations and buffers, suggesting where parking should be located, and also driveways and curb cuts. One item that was brought to my attention of the new standards was a concern about the, within page, I think it's twenty.
Fourteen.
Fifteen, actually, within the table, there's a minimum of eight feet for a one-way, and the question came up of, well, why not sixteen feet minimum for the two-way, and that is something we could reduce, but, but it's just to make sure there's adequate room when cars are passing by, so if you'd like it reduced, we could reduce it, or leave the standard as is.
I think reducing it would make it consistent, I don't see a reason why it needs to be a twenty, unless you can explain a good reason for me.
We're not entirely sure, but the best guess is that it allows some extra space for cars passing by, or if you're parking in the driveway, that you have room to open the doors when the cars are.
It could be a fire department requirement.
It could be something that's a fire department requirement, my guess is it might have rooted somewhere in a road standard, whether it be ours or someone else's, the public works director's not in this week, but we'll follow up with them and look at that.
Room for the wheelchair to get between the cars.
That's right.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check.
Well, maybe, maybe we should not, maybe we should leave that.
Well, why don't we research it, I, I thought it would give more room toward, for the building itself, and it's consistent with the eight feet.
We'll research that, follow up.
Okay.
I did have a question.
Go ahead, Doc.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, on page twenty-fourteen, or.
Don't use those, 'cause nobody has those numbers.
Yeah, we're not using that, twenty-fourteen, so I was just wondering about the twenty-foot setback, is that actually what's gonna happen? Is that actually what's going to happen if you have residential?
Which letter are you talking about?
There's the diagram, excuse me, the figure 17.2-8, the transition, you know, for the daylight plane. So will we actually, I didn't see where the 20-foot was in the code. So are we actually going to have 20 feet required between, okay.
No, so that's an example saying if there were a 20-foot setback, at that setback line is where you would make that vertical plane that would go up for 25 feet, and that's where the daylight plane would be drawn from.
Okay.
Typically, in the mixed-use neighborhood, the setback requirement, it would match whatever the setback requirement is of the zone, so we would locate where that is. So if it's at five feet, that's where you would make that vertical plane that goes up to 25 feet and then has the 45 degrees off of it. So that's just for the sake of a...
That's a sliding line.
A sliding line.
Okay. So my consideration was, at 20 feet, I can see a 45-degree angle, but maybe if the building's closer, like at four or five feet or something like that, then you might need a reduced angle so you get a better sunlight exposure. So, or somehow deal with the building so you, you know, get the sunlight. So at 20 feet, yes, I can understand that, but if you made it closer, I don't care if it's a 45, you're still going to have a shadow. So that's sort of my consideration there.
Yeah, we're trying to establish the standard. You're trying to create an articulating line.
Yeah, no, you're right. So, yeah, so...
I don't know...
I don't know that it makes that much difference, except if it is closed, you're still going to have a shadow, even if it's plain at 45 degrees.
Well, the setback is going to be what the setback is. We're just trying to say that this is, the line is 45 degrees, and we just have to use that.
No, I know.
I think it'd be too hard to change an articulating line to change around height.
I'm just bringing it for this guy.
I got you.
We will modify the figure to show, instead of 20-foot setback, it'll say minimum setback, minimum zone setback, so that will not throw people off with the 20 feet.
Are you okay with moving on?
Sure.
Moving on.
Okay, so now we are moving on to the Commercial and Industrial Zoning District, which starts on page 24-1.
24-1?
And just a quick picture of where this is. So currently, all of 41st Avenue that's in Capitola is the CC District. Within the update to the general plan and then our zoning code update, we're creating a Regional Commercial District, which is the area around the mall in Claire's, extending to the Auto Plaza Drive. And then the Community Commercial District, which has a little bit different land uses that are allowed, is south of Capitola Road and also along Bay Avenue. So there's the updated zoning map showing the new zones. And first, we'll talk about land uses, unless there's any discussion on purpose statements in that zone. We'll just pass over those and jump into the land use table. So land use table is on page 24-3. Some of the big changes, drive-through facilities. We discussed this during Issues and Options, and then we also discussed this again with the Planning Commission, with the revision. So they're limited to the Regional Commercial Zone, so north of Capitola Road. And they also are required to be 100 feet away from any residential property line. So along Derby is where you would see on the east side of 41st, they would have a greater setback due to noise. Another change is mobile food vendors. We had public comment during the review by Planning Commission and requests from the public to consider allowing mobile food vendors in the industrial zone, and the Planning Commission supported that, so that was a red line that was added. Urban agriculture, we've got new standards for that. Not sure when we'll be seeing that back on 41st Avenue. I think that was the late history of that area, but... And then residential mixed use. There's, within the land use table, when we have our notes, note number five regards, there's a set limit, a maximum limit for mixed use, so we'll discuss that tonight as well. First discussion point that was requested for the land use table was the mobile food vendors. And so now the new code requires a conditional use permit in the industrial zone, and it was requested that we discuss mobile food vendors being allowed in both the CC and the CR.
Does that go on her list?
Would you bring the map back up again, please? I'm assuming we're talking about mobile food vendors that are sited on private property, not in the public right-of-way.
That's for industrial, yeah, that particular...
In any case.
In any case, yeah. Within the zone, typically, they'd have to be located on a commercial property.
Private property, not...
Yeah, private property.
Not the street.
Unless directed otherwise, yes.
Okay. Street food, off the street.
Yes.
Got it. I'm just wondering, you know, if you were asking about community commercial, you know, expanding it to community commercial, I can't see that. I could certainly see it in, you know, commercial and industrial, but I'd have a hard time in the pink zones envisioning that fitting in in any way.
They took it out. Didn't you take it out? It's a little red line there. Does that mean maybe?
Oh, if there's dashes in this, that means they're prohibited.
They were requiring, they were saying it's allowed in industrial, and I thought the question was, do we want to consider regional or community?
Yeah, that's the question. Would you like it in?
I think there's nothing wrong in regional, just because of the way it is and the way it's isolated and making, you know, wonderful setbacks. But I can't possibly see it in the pink zone in the community commercial. That's just my idea. I would be soft on it in CR, on the mall. If the mall wanted to have a food pod day or whatever in their parking lot, you know, who's it going to hurt? But if something were to take place in the O'Neills parking lot with a bunch of food vendors, I'd start to worry about that.
There'd be room for it, yeah.
So I'm in favor of, I'm in favor of the CR zone in addition to the industrial, but certainly not the CC zone.
Just a second.
Yeah, there's not, there's not the parking and the room for it.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, those places hardly have parking for their...
There's a reason we call it community commercial, because it borders the community very closely, and we could start impacting, and the same reason for the drive-thru not being in there. I think the red zone is just that. That's where our retail, heavy retail, heavy, you know, regional commercial, that's where people go. That's fine. Just don't let it splash out. I don't know, does that sound right?
Good for CR only?
CR and, CR and I.
Okay. It requires a use permit?
It would require a conditional use permit.
At what level?
Planning Commission.
This is for permanent. This is not for one day, this is not for a one-day event.
This is a, they can come in and propose to you exactly what it would be. I've seen places where they'll do this once a week, where the food vendor, you know, they'll get a conditional use permit, but they'll come once a week to say, I saw it once at a sporting goods place, that they had five different commercial vendors, that it was an event in this community that every Wednesday night these vendors come in.
What does it cost to come before the Planning Commission?
It costs, for a conditional use permit, a little over 1,500, I want to say.
That's a lot of steak sandwiches.
So, I mean, the way that we've been interpreting is if it's a special event, we would allow it without a permit. It would be, it would fall under the special event permit.
Right.
So if they wanted to come in and just do a one-off on the mall parking lot, I think we could permit that with a special event permit. If they want it as an ongoing recurring activity, then I think we would take them to the Planning Commission and say this is a new use.
I'm there with you, and I'm 100% behind that. I just wanted to prevent the one-of from being onerous, so that we don't see anything newer.
And we can specify that, that this applies to sort of ongoing, more than weekend-type events.
Well, this was a request that we had. I'm just, I don't see it on the map, but up here in the, let's go up to where the brewery is on Kennedy.
That's industrial. That's industrial.
I don't see that up there. That's, that's what you're saying. That would be applied to...
Well, they recommended industrial. I think industrial's good, but, and this would take place on a regular basis, would come before the Planning Commission, which is correct, because the conditional use permit for the brewery is specific in requiring no food. So the Planning Commission will have to wrestle in that area with that particular place. And that's the only place I know of that's an industrial that has that prohibition attached to its CUP.
I just may, we had, that request was made and was before us, and I just want to make sure that it would have to go through some kind of review to...
Okay.
The Planning Commission.
Right. Go ahead, John.
You know, the way I think about it is, okay, right now, Whole Foods, you know, every now and then they have food vendor, you know, extravaganza.
Barbecue out there.
Yeah, they have, you know, they have like 20 different vendors or something like that. So suppose we had something like that on a regular basis, maybe not every month, but, you know, every two months, you know, they're talking about new products and stuff like that. So if this kind of concept started picking up, you know, when they do that, they probably have hundreds of people there. I mean, it's a major thing when people, you know, go there and they spill over to all the other businesses. So it's truly, to me, something that's beneficial to everything that's adjacent, and so far, we've been resistant to this.
But no, that's in the district where...
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I'm totally for it. I was just asking if everybody's okay with that. That's what I was trying to go with.
Yeah, I'm totally for it, definitely.
Good, good.
Just in case somebody comes in and they want a temporary permit for frequently, we'd have to have some parameters.
Yeah, that's what they're saying.
Because that might, that might happen. Somebody will say, well, we're having another special event. Oh, we're having another special, oh, we're having another special event. So we just need to, I think they're fine, too. I think they, you know, people like them. It's kind of happening thing and very popular, but we should just have, just have some real clear rules and regulations so we don't get caught up with, with, you know, we've had those things, those things before where we didn't anticipate things, and then it happened, and then we go, oh, well, we didn't think about that, so we have to just...
It's like running the bandstand. The other, you know, we have an ordinance that requires that you can't have more than three garage sales a year. You could say that in this scenario, saying you're allowed to have, you're allowed to get special permits three times a year. After that, it requires a...
Do we want to put a quantity, do we want to put a quantity on it?
If we want to control, I mean, I think Councilman Rever Harland's comment is valid. You would potentially have somebody that wants to do it every three months under a special permit, so that might be a good way to catch it. So you can have a maximum one or two times a year under a special event permit. Anything more, I don't see.
Is that a good number?
Let me, let me, go ahead. A little bit of context here. So actually, special event permits are technically special event, permits that take place on public property, and they govern, the police department issues special event permits. So what we're talking about, actually, we've characterized in the past as sidewalk sales or parking lot sales, excuse me. And traditionally, what we've done is allow two per property per year.
There you go.
And that, I don't know if we've codified. I know that Rich and I talked about that, but I think that was sort of some discussion about that. You can have, you know, sort of two special events-type things in your parking lot a year, O'Neills, that sort of thing, bring food trucks, that kind of thing. But if it's more ongoing than that, you trigger the need for a new permit.
Yeah, maybe we'll just try it and see, you know.
That's fine. That's a great number.
And that's, yeah, that's the way we've operated.
Let's apply what we've already done, so we don't reinvent the wheel. That's fine. Moving on.
Oh, I would love to delete the drive-through facilities, but last time we talked about that, I was in the minority. But, you know, we had an, we had an unwritten rule here forever, no drive-throughs. And Burger King was in the county when we annexed 38th, 39th, 40th, 41st, 42nd, 43rd, and 44th, so we inherited a drive-in. Dairy Queen, I believe, was here also. I don't know what year that was in.
Before all of us were here.
And, yes, when Disco was here, it was here, I think, across the street. So, you know, the only other facility we had was McDonald's came and said, you know, could we do one? And I said, don't even think about it, and, but they still do. And then the, then CBS Long's came in, but I, I mean, you'd get, on a, probably a 3-2 vote or a 4-1 vote. So I'm just bringing it up. I say let's throw it out to the public, and when we finish this whole thing and have a public hearing, let's ask the public what they think. If they want them, that's very interesting.
Would you be okay with putting it on Katie's list?
Yeah, side list.
Just as background, we did our Issues and Options. We had our focus group meetings of various stakeholders. This was one in our survey. This is one of the things surprisingly that was most commented on and desired, was more drive-throughs.
I think that we have politicized drive-throughs in this town long enough. In our regional commercial, let the drive-through happen, and 100-foot setback, that's a great rule, because that's why we killed McDonald's, because...
Too close to the neighbors.
You don't realize it when you're at McDonald's, but you look out their back door and 60 feet away, someone's living.
Right, but if McDonald's were to move to the front of the street, I would not want to prohibit the concept.
And we told them that. We told them they could do that.
I'm saying, the 100-foot setback in the CR, just let it happen. Let's stop making it a political, you know, an emotional thing where...
Well, that's only because...
We don't have drive-throughs in Capitola.
Well, that's only because because some people...
Let's get past that.
I know, but that's because people want In-N-Out burgers. I don't want any, there's, I can't think of anybody that wants anything else other than that for a drive-in.
But I may not want In-N-Out burgers. Seriously, I do, but I may not want In-N-Out burgers, but I won't stop anybody else from having it, just because I find it personally, you know, unpleasant that people would eat things like that. And this is what we hear. Let's get past that and just let it happen in CR.
We did have a inquiry at one point with the Old Marine Calendar site from a chain restaurant, and it was imperative to them they have a drive-through. They said, if we can have a drive-through, we're interested. If not, we're going away. They went away anyway, but...
I wouldn't want to rule that out. You have a comment?
I'm sorry, I sat on the other side of the fence. I think anybody sitting there idling in their car is not, is not productive environmentally and for their health. And I think we made a huge mistake. In fact, CBS made a huge mistake. They took, they took out, that whole area you see was in commercial, inside store use. They took that whole building down to place, place area for cars.
Yes.
It was the stupidest retail decision I've ever seen.
You know, in your mind, but to stakeholders say, I think Stephanie hit the nail on the head. It would be a 3-2 vote, okay? Or something else. So you...
Well, that's discussion. I mean, I'm open to that, but I just...
And the reasons why we were against it previously was air quality reasons. When, when we used to have horrible air quality in this state, that was an issue. And then we had unleaded gasoline, and the air cleared up, and the smog cleared up a little bit, and so we kind of forgot about it.
So if I, if I stop in my car, the engine shuts off. Do I get to use the drive-through?
If I come in my electric car, can I use the drive-through?
Well, I'll tell you what, it's more than that. It, what you did is you actually covered that whole area in asphalt, that whole area. And you know, that's as big as a football field out there with the three lanes that they have going through there. For pedestrians going across between the mall, it's a, it's a, it's a major disaster to get from the CVS store over to McDonald's, because you have to walk through three lanes and come in and out. I just don't think it's a good planning decision. I mean, if you have, what McDonald's should have done is they should have bought that Arthur Donis building in front of it that already had the drive-through, and they have that storefront right on top of it. That would have been good planning. Instead, what do we get? We get an Arthur Donis in prime location.
That's what we're allowing now. We're allowing drive-throughs with 100-foot setback from residential neighborhoods in the CR District.
Is there a proposed change in here? I'm not...
The proposed change is, previously, there were not, it wasn't really very clear on how we handled these. It's now only allowed in regional commercials as a conditional use permit, and it must be 100 feet from residential. So I think what we're discussing is, should we put this on the sensitive list or keep it as is? So the two things I'm hearing is, do we want to come back to this discussion? Or do you, is there agreement with where the Planning Commission landed on this or an amendment?
The Planning Commission left it as is with the 100-foot setback.
They're allowing it to be, to happen with 100-foot setback in the CR District.
With a conditional use permit.
I'm okay with that.
I think this is a sensitive discussion. I think we should put it on the sensitive list.
A sensitive list?
Well, we probably have three votes not to do it here tonight, but I think we should still study it and look at it and think about it.
No, I think John's on the fence.
No, no, I actually do not want the drive-through.
Oh, okay. I misinterpreted what you said.
You have two votes not to have it. Yeah, okay. Or three. I have no idea, but I think it's worthwhile discussing it.
Would you like to put it on the sensitive list?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Are we all okay with that, with the sensitive list?
So it's the other item on the list. There was kind of a definitive task out of that, and that was to engage the BIA about how they feel about mobile food carts. I'm not sure what the distinct task is out of this one.
This is to bring out everybody who has an opinion, so get some folding chairs.
Well, we could, we could certainly put it in the parking lot. I just don't know if there's an expectation of staff bringing back some additional information or what that information might be.
No, I think...
In the interest of moving forward, I'd like to set aside some time for that, so that we can move forward. That's basically my reason at this point.
So one and two are going to the sensitive list?
Okay, it's on the list.
The drive-through is going on the sensitive list.
Right, I'm looking at this one and two on this list here. That's what I was saying.
Just, just one.
Oh, just one. That's right, just one.
Mobile food vendors has been added to...
So just the drive-through goes to sensitive, and what was the other one you brought? You brought the village?
I believe it was the mobile food carts was our, in the village, was our first parking lot issue.
Yeah, that was on our...
Okay, so the next, are we ready for the next topic under this?
Yes.
Okay, so within...
I still have a few on this, yeah. So on page 24-3, so we're talking about residential uses, and I'd just like to put up for discussion that there could be some incentives to developers to put in ADUs here. Right now, there's a limit... Right now, there's a limit as proposed that residential be no more than fifty percent of floor area of the building. But maybe we could give, develop some proposals here from planning that would allow more for some low-income incentives. I'm not sure at this time what they would be, but my main point is, I think we should come up with a few more ideas in terms of proposing incentives so that we could develop more low-income housing in this town. And so I'd just like to put that out for discussion.
We're not on that section yet though, are we?
We will, we'll be talking about the affordable housing overlay shortly, so.
That'd be the appropriate one?
That would be.
Okay, I have a mark for that section also. Okay.
Okay.
So food preparation, that's the other one I had, sorry. Same page. Oh, you already answered this one, yeah. The Grady's Market, that has food preparation, and that's in residential, it's not here, so I'm fine.
Moving on.
Okay, so within the resident, what's listed for residential, we have multifamily dwellings and residential mixed use. You'll see next to the multifamily dwellings in the regional commercial, there's a footnote for number five. And number five puts a limit to the amount of residential uses within a site. At fifty percent of the floor area of the building's site is limited for residential within a mixed, within a multifamily dwelling. First, I think that footnote should be next to residential mixed use, I think it's just on the, the number five should be on the next line.
Oh, I see.
We'll, we'll drop that, we'll move the location of it. And we'll probably keep it next to multifamily dwelling because it's applicable to that too. But the discussion was requested to discuss this limit of fifty percent maximum of residential in mixed use. By Councilmember Termini.
I believe that that's not advisable. It does not promote mixed-use commercial residential because if you require it to be, and, and look at it in terms of the fifty percent, it has to be commercial. The banks will not loan a developer on a project that's fifty percent commercial and fifty percent residential. Because there's enough office space unrented in this county that it's just not a viable investment. And when you think about it, what we're looking for is the first floor to be commercial and the rest of the building to be residential. That speaks more to a ninety-ten split than a fifty-fifty split. They can take a twenty-eighty or a thirty-seventy, but to hamstring, if, if we, if we're honest and we really want to be mixed-use residential commercial, we need to get in the latitude to go with as little as ten percent commercial. Or say something like, all first-floor spaces in a project need to be commercial, the rest can be residential, if that feels.
Mr. Mayor, by, by way of reference, this is, this is language that is intimately familiar with and brings me back to a period of time about seven years ago. So the, the language that Councilmember Termini is proposing was actually the city's original proposal. When we added in the language about mixed use in the CC district. The Coastal Commission at that time rejected the language and pushed back with this fifty percent language. And to get our housing element done, I think we ended up accepting it, but I think that was exactly where we were trying to go, basically saying, look, you know, the ground floor is what determines really the use of a building. And they somehow had this vision at the Coastal Commission that we were going to surreptitiously convert the Forty-First Avenue corridor into a private residential enclave unless they, they got this requirement in. So we were there, we were exactly where you, you're suggesting, Councilmember Termini, that basically say, look, it needs to be primarily commercial, that means the ground floor is commercial, and then above, you know, let's not have a percentage. And they came back with that, the limits on it, so.
Can we move, I mean, is there any movement in the number?
I, I think we should try, I mean, I think the, the point earlier that was made about the Coastal Commission was exactly on point. It says, I think we need to put our stake in the ground here with this zoning code.
The county is standing on the same ninety-ten. They're, they want to change theirs because they're recognizing the same thing, and they just gave a variance to Barry Swenson on Pacific Avenue to do the whole first floor commercial and the other four floors residential, which makes sense for their needs.
Why did they need a variance for that?
Because they had fifty-fifty.
Oh.
And they're, and they're looking to change that for that purpose because it was brought to their attention that no one wants, you know, three floors of, you know, insurance agents.
Right, but in our case, we wouldn't have that many floors, so wouldn't a number like thirty percent be more, I mean.
I think that we'd keep it to reality, which is the first floor should be commercial, whatever they, they're able to.
Or maybe commercial in case they want to, in case they want to do something else.
First floor must be commercial?
Yeah.
Any problem with that?
Because it's in our, it's in our, we're talking about our CR zone, right?
No, C, C.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, this is CR.
It's over several.
You had the footnote in CR.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, in that case, if it was a three-story building, it'd be thirty-three percent, if it was a four-story building, it'd be twenty-five, which I think is okay. But I'm okay with the language, first floor, commercial.
Right.
One other distinction that Ben just whispered in my ear is, you know, the horizontal mixed use versus vertical mixed use. And I think we're all talking about vertical mixed-use scenarios, but on horizontal mixed use, we may want to require at least fifty percent of those to be commercial.
Why?
While you're in the commercial zone, so imagine if somebody on Forty-First Avenue came in with a project and had ninety percent residential and just one single storefront, is that what we'd want?
No, we're talking, we're, we're talking about residences above.
The vertical, I, I think everyone's here on the same page.
I see your point, we're, we're all clear on, on vertical, but, but the horizontal would be a problem because I wouldn't want that. I'd want more of it, at least twenty-five percent.
Maybe a hundred percent.
But if we're, if we, you know, put the stake in the ground at all first floor is commercial, we don't have to think about.
Oh, okay.
Horizontal development, sorry.
That would, then that would encompass both horizontal.
Would anybody not want to put commercial on the first floor for any good reason?
Well, if the question is, do we want them to?
I don't know, that's why I say, is there a good, is there a good reason why they would want to do that?
Well, I don't know, maybe.
It would be good for us too.
Well, I don't think it would be for us.
If it's going to be all residential development such as.
Condos.
Or what we did next to Trader Joe's around the corner, where we did the low-income thing, that's all residential.
Correct, but that's not what we want.
That's in that zone though.
Our CCCR zone, we want commercial because that's what's there and that's what we want to foster.
Would this have failed for the project we just approved on High Orchard Supply?
No, because that, that wasn't a mixed-use project, it was residential.
Yeah, we wouldn't like commercial, lower floor there would never work.
But they didn't have a mixed-use component.
Oh, okay, all right.
But that was discussed, some people did want commercial on the first, but the planning commission, I think, discussed that about having commercial on the first floor.
Correct.
Actually, when we, when this is taken to the planning commission, it's all starting to come back. The, the planning commission talked about, they, they had the, of the wording in there, of the floor area of the buildings on the site. And there was a discussion about, within a mixed-use area, it's not always that the ground level has to be commercial with residential above. There was a discussion of, sometimes it works to have a commercial building and then a couple residential condos and then a commercial. So to allow that variety was, I think, part of this as well. And it's within the whole site, so if you're thinking about the mall and, or Kings Plaza and redevelopment allowing for commercial in some areas and then separate residential as long as it's on the site.
That works in the CC more than the CR, right? I mean, the CR were.
You're trying to bring in the region to.
Yeah. You know, the county's struggling exactly the same thing, they have the same ordinance, would you fifty-fifty? They're having a real problem with it, and so they're changing their ordinance too, so.
My recommendation is, is that for Kings Plaza and the mall, is that, you know, we all understand that that's probably a specific plan. You know, and we really shouldn't be writing zoning code that's going to work for every eventuality there. Because I could see a situation where, you know, given the scale of those projects, you know, a lot of the things we've talked about may not necessarily come into play. It seems like basically defining it that in the CC and CR district, this is, those zones are about commercial enterprises and, and the ground floor should be commercial. And it seems like that's a relatively consistent message the city could put out there and certainly consistent with our general plan, the overall vision that I've heard the council articulate for many years.
Can we, can we go back to the map on the CR, look at the CR zone again?
So just one suggestion based on what Jamie just said is, for residential mixed use, we could add a number six just stating that the ground floor is limited to commercial use.
That's what the intent was, I think.
Right, and then for number five, we could consider, just clarifying that we could even remove number five altogether if that's.
We could just have six.
I don't want you to have it there in teeny-weeny print, it's an, it's an important, it's an important item that should be called out.
A question that I have is whether or not a standalone multifamily building that's not horizontal, I'm sorry, vertical mixed use should be permitted in the CR.
Well, we, we have to get back.
The way it's written now, it is, it is permitted.
But Redtree wants to do something like this, I thought, so. Didn't they want to do commercial on the bottom and residential on the top?
At what site?
Redtree.
So, so, but you're, you're missing zoning codes here, Ben asked about in the CR. Within the CR, that's what I heard you say, and within the CR, again, consistent with past council direction and the general plan, I think that the council's position would be no, that that is a standalone residential project in that CR zone would not be appropriate. The CC, the CC zone, I think, is a different ballgame, given, you know, the scale of which we're talking about. We're talking about Capitol Road, Lower Forty-First, Upper Bay, and there, I think more flexibility would be warranted.
I don't think anybody would have standalone in the CR district, and so if that needs to be included, I think we will.
So this would have applied to the one that we just discussed on Thirty-Eighth. The old Salvage Yard. Because that would have made commercial on the bottom and residential above.
We could have required it.
Yeah, we could have.
We didn't, but we didn't.
Well, we didn't, yeah.
So it wasn't a mixed-use project.
Wasn't mixed-use, it was CC zoning, but it wasn't mixed-use.
Where, where we were just talking about is whether or not we want to allow multifamily, standalone multifamily in the CR zone.
And that was, I believe, a no.
I think we.
We say no, that Thirty-Eighth Avenue project would not have been.
I think we need to get back to the discussion of, of protecting our sales tax and the whole change of use on Forty-First Avenue to the things like the orthodontist office. And we need to get back to that discussion, remember that we need to protect our sales tax. So, you know, while I'd like to have that flexibility, and I, I think there might be some interesting project, mixed-use projects like that, commercial on the first is, I think.
Well, that's what we said, we do, and, and you agree that no standalone residential projects in CR.
With that edit, we'll put a dash where C-five was, so five goes away altogether. You'll now see a dash that it's prohibited, and then we should continue the discussion of would you like within multi-residential mixed use to require commercial on the ground floor?
To require commercial on the ground.
Mm-hmm. And, and I'll bring to your attention, let's go to page, there's actually new standards for residential mixed-use development in commercial zoning districts.
What page, Jamie?
This is page twenty-four-nine, and I have a slide on this actually, so I'll move ahead to that. Ground floor spaces fronting the primary street shall be occupied by retail, restaurant, personal services uses that generate pedestrian activities. So that's for ground floor space fronting a primary street. Or we could also add a note within the land use table that, under the mixed use, that all ground floor must be commercial uses, or no residential is limited to upper stories.
Yes, I think that's being consistent. Could you, could you further define personal services?
Now.
Services that generate sales tax, you could put that in there. Let's, let's just nip it right out there. Let's just be clear.
No, I'm not, no, no, no.
I'm asking if personal services include the council office.
Proclude us from doing a hotel in these zones?
Okay.
I don't think so.
So we.
That's a good thing.
Katie, does this preclude us from doing a hotel in these zones, where it will be, doesn't, okay.
It would, we would specify, I think the way to go about it would be to specify that residential is not allowed on the first floor rather than what is allowed on the, you know, because everything else within the commercial zoning district should be allowed on the first floor. And then we, I'll go over the standards for office, which we've created new standards based on the issues and options discussions.
Does that building placement at least ten feet from the edge of the sidewalk give us room for landscaping? It doesn't.
Oh, we're going to talk about that in a slide as well because we have a suggestion there. So, so what I'm hearing for this slide is, within the CR, we're going to strike multifamily dwellings. And then under residential mixed use, we'll add a note that will not allow residential within the first floor.
That's correct.
Okay, shall we move on?
Move on.
Okay. Next is, within residential uses, we want to be very clear that there was a discussion of whether or not single-family is allowed as a use within the CC and CR zones. Currently, it is not allowed within our zoning code, and when you have a single-family home, you're not allowed to do any improvements to it. So essentially, those homes continue as is, they're not allowed to be expanded or any additions made to them. So we think it would be smart to add single-family and be very clear and put dashes that they're prohibited. It is stressed within an earlier section of code that anything not listed in the land use table is prohibited, but we thought it would be more clear. We could also add a standard here if you'd like, I'm going to show you where there are a few single families that this would impact. So here on Bromer Street, the three properties that are highlighted are light brown, that is change, that's a change in our zoning code to multifamily. And the properties that would be impacted by a change to single, well, that are impacted because they are single-family are, there's three properties, one on the corner of Forty-First in Bromer, that's an office. The property, the first property in is residential and the third property in is actually an office. So it would impact that middle property that's in the pink, would just continue as prohibited. And then there's this one other property that is on Melton Street, it's behind the liquor store, but they actually came in. We had it as yellow as single-family, they came in and they said, we want to stay as commercial. They're aware that they can't do anything to the property until it changes to commercial. So with that, those are the.
Those are the only properties.
No, there's a house over by the brewery and the winery on Chittenden Lane or whatever the name of that street, there's one.
Oh, there is one property in the industrial zone, so. Oh, yeah, and two on Thirty-Eighth, that's right, sorry. There, so there is a half dozen properties. But they, what we were, when we were discussing this, we could add, if you'd like, if you'd like the single-family homes that do exist today to be able to not be subject to not being allowed to expand. We could look at that when we get to the non-conforming chapter. Or we can keep the, the regulations as they are today, and eventually they will evolve into commercial properties, so. That's just.
What's best for the planning standpoint.
Yeah, I know we don't want them to evolve.
So the reason why you see the three properties on Bromer is because that kind of goes with the, the typical lot depth within the CC zone, up to that area, and because there's already two offices out of the three properties. So it seemed, there, there are actually two of those, the two properties that are in have been for sale and questions have been coming in about what they can do with the properties. And it does seem reasonable to keep those as commercial due to the depth of the lot and they could redevelop into commercial in the future. Melton Street isn't a factor because they're asking to stay CC, and then along Thirty-Eighth, there's a few properties, one next to the old lumberyard, and that, it actually was used as commercial office at one point, or medical. So I think keeping it commercial, you'll eventually see them evolve because they're kind of stuck with the use that they are, they can't expand, so.
We set the city limits in this area, my gosh.
I think that's the direction we want to go.
Is to keep it as is, okay, we'll move on, if, if that's.
Anybody else want to call with that? Okay, moving on.
I'm sorry, are we getting, are we getting CC zoning on the Bromer lots?
Yes, we're keeping CC zoning on the first three Bromer lots. The, the three beyond that in light brown, that was a change that happened during the planning commission. And it was a neighborhood effort, the three property owners came forth and said, we'd rather be residential, we're surrounded by residential. There, so those three will be multifamily residential.
So it's just the three on the corner with the, with the red arrow?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
How wonderful.
All right, next we'll talk about permitted office uses in the CC and CR zones, so this is from page, page twenty-four-five. And there's a new table, this is what came out of our issues and options. So ground floor, less than five thousand square feet within the community commercial, it is permitted. In the regional commercial, it would require a conditional use permit. Ground floor, five thousand. Ground floor, 5,000 square feet or more, it's a conditional use permit in both. If it's an upper floor, above the ground floor, it's permitted in both the CC and the CR. And then, within a multi-tenant site, an office space that does not have storefrontage and is setback from the front facade, is also permitted. So I don't, can't think of many examples of where that would be, because most multi-tenants would have storefrontage, but.
Can we just take all office use out of the CR on the first floor?
You can prohibit.
I think it's time. If they have a multi-story commercial building in the CR, and they want to rent an upper floor to an office, that's fine. None of it belongs on the first floor.
Are there any now in the CR?
I'm sure there are.
There's a chiropractor office in Brown Ranch.
Oh, there's, the dialysis center is in the CR.
There's a, there used to be a realty office over there in Brown Ranch.
I want to say an H&R Block.
The orthodontist and the dialysis was a grudgingly approved project, both. It took massive amounts of commercial square footage that used to generate sales tax in our regional commercial zone. And if they want to put offices on the second floor or something, all well and good, but anything on the first floor, should we just do it commercial? CC is a whole different story. And it's a good place, because it's transitional zoning into R1.
Well, let's throw it out there for discussion. I think Brown Ranch might have a problem with it, but, I mean, the mall certainly shouldn't, or any of the other commercial buildings shouldn't have a problem.
And Brown Ranch shouldn't either, because, I'll tell you, their choice would have been to have something retail. The only reason the chiropractor's in there is because they had no one to rent the space.
And Brown Ranch doesn't own the dialysis building. That was a different owner.
No, but the chiropractor's office.
Well, there's a Thunderbird Real Estate office in the middle of that, too.
Yeah.
I agree. I think that should be all retail.
And, I mean, Thunderbird can stay there forever.
Yeah.
But Thunderbird can be anywhere. That's commercial.
But if they move, and that space is vacant, then we should close that, close that door now.
Is that clear direction?
Are we, are we good with that?
Well, I think we need to talk to some folks, and they're going to be, have some interest in this.
Sensitive issue?
Yep.
Mike, sensitive issue?
I don't think it's sensitive at all. I think we're doing what's right.
I hear what you're saying. We have a request to put-
No, no, I'm fine. I'll let you, I'll let you know soon whether, I think it might be a real sensitive issue or not.
Let's go back to CC and CR, the map again, to make sure we're covering all the areas. Okay.
The map?
Map.
There it is.
There.
So it would affect Auto Plaza Drive, Claire Street, and around the mall, and the frontage on Forty-First?
There is, there is one building. I actually think that this is a great idea, because I've seen a struggle with some of these-
Building next to McDonald's is being eaten up by medical facilities?
Right.
We're watching creeping medical take place on Forty-First Avenue? This is the time to stop it. What's there is all well and good, but we could wind up with, you know, a medical center along the entire Forty-First Avenue corridor, and laying off police officers.
Since I got on this council, that's been the discussion. People have been upset with every building that we lose, so this is a chance to stop the bleeding. So I'm, I'm in favor of supporting this, because it's not the direction we want to go. And you're right, the medical buildings love that location, because I think it was brought up, that they love the opportunity to bring people for that, so they can go shop, come to our office and get your teeth done, and drop your kids off and go shop. For them, it's lucrative. For us, we lose money. So I'm, I would like to stop it right now.
That's fine. I'm fine.
What do you think, Rich?
I was just going to make sure that everyone understood that the language as proposed applies to office uses, including professional, medical, banks, financial institutions, and government offices. So I've heard you talk about medical as general offices, but you also want-
We banks, we banks in there.
Do we want to have banks, financial institutions, or government offices that could potentially be allowed?
Yeah, I think so.
I don't know how much, I don't know how much ability we have to keep a government, a federal office out of an office space, but, you know, I think banks should be left in there, but everything else should go. What, the IRS could make people walk up the stairs?
You don't want to attack the government offices, you-
Yeah, I want to attack the government offices. Hey, I attacked, I attacked the cell phone tower.
Yeah, we saw that work.
Yeah, they're not on Forty-First Avenue anymore.
I have no friends in the federal government, I have no problem.
So just banks?
Yeah, let banks in.
But I think our main problem is the medical offices.
Well, that's right. We're just trying to, Rich just said there's more in that. So it's, banks would be okay, everything else is-
Financial institutions, which, you know, mortgage kind of companies, yea and nay.
Banks.
I'm kind of adverse about banks. And I'll tell you why. It's because they're the only ones that can afford prime locations, and they buy those up. And what it is, banks are not community-walking oriented, they're car-drive-in type institution. They don't really go to share with other ones. How many banks are on Forty-First?
I don't have a war, again, I don't want to start a war with banks. I have no interest in attacking banks. The other ones I do, I think they dig into our revenue. To open up the cantor for the banks, I just don't-
I'm just telling you that they take up the major corners in all-
I hear you.
They bring shoppers here, too. They bring some shoppers.
Banks are a convenient item, I, you know, I, I'm trying to protect our revenue sources.
Well, they can stay banks. We can't, we can't get them out of it, they want to stay banks.
Yeah, I don't see them as our-
Well, I'm saying this, is that they change the use of banks, we should require it from a bank, then it requires a use permit, and it requires, if they change the use from a bank, they, they need to go to retail.
If that bank leaves, McDonald's is going to buy it and put it in a drive-through, so, because it's 100 feet away, so don't worry about that. So, seriously, are we okay with allowing banks, or do you want to attack the banks? I mean, I, I'm okay with-
I don't think you have to tackle, I just, I just, if they change the use from being a bank, those are prime retail corners, that they, they should be required to go to retail.
Let the market decide that.
I think the market will decide that.
Okay.
The internet might decide that one, for the banks.
So, the only thing we're going to leave in is banks? Is that-
Do we want?
Yeah. We have banks and financial institutions written up as one type of land use, so we're going to strike banks and financial institutions from that.
Yeah, I mean, there's-
It's the same.
Mortgage offices, or, or title companies, or things like that. And it's like, keep it simple.
Thanks, thanks.
Thanks, okay.
I check services. Check machines.
No. Okay, banks?
Most horrible situation in the world.
I think we're okay with banks, and we're ready to move on.
And we'll leave everything the same in the CC zone as written.
Great.
Okay.
No, we needed to recapture that.
Okay, next, we'll look at the land use table for the CC, CR, and industry.
Just a little pause before we move on. So I'm looking at nine o'clock, and I just want to throw out the question of the assumed time that we were going to go to. Was there a-
I didn't realize it was nine o'clock. I was having such a good time.
I went nine fifteen. I could probably get you to the end of this chapter.
Fifteen more minutes?
Mm-hmm.
I just want to go to the end of the chapter, whatever it is. End of the chapter, end of the chapter, pauses. And just last, any questions from the public? Okay?
We have a chance to raise our hand.
Let's, I just want to make sure. Go ahead.
Okay, so we'll go to page twenty-four-six. These are the development standards for the zone. The only item that was brought to my attention was under landscaped open space, and you can see the red line for industry. It's industrial. It says up to 5% as determined by the permit approval process. That came into being with the planning commission review. There was a suggestion by Councilmember Harland that there should be a minimum set there, similar to the CC and CR districts. It could be a little bit less, or it could be as high as a minimum of 5% open space in our-
My point was, it says up to 5% as determined. What if they come in with 1%? I don't want 1%. That's not enough. So if we say at least 5% or something like that, that will-
What was it before?
10%. Or did that cross out?
I think it was 10%. So, it would be just, if you did a, you could do the same minimum of 5% that-
I mean, even in industrial area, I want landscaping. And that's, that's all.
I hear your concept, I'm just trying to come up with a number.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to quantify it. And if it was at 10, I think the one would be too little, and it-
At least five.
No, it could be five, it might just be-
Yeah, there were-
It was five.
We could start with five and see, see how it works.
How does five, does that seem like a reasonable number?
It does seem like a reasonable number for industrial, and I think it also brings more, people know what to expect when they come in with an application with a minimum rather than that-
Then let's just say no less than five.
Yeah.
Any, any input? Good?
Drought, drought tolerant? Should we specify that?
That's in our landscape work.
That's in there, there is. So, so no less than five. Moving on.
Okay, moving on. Next, just again, we moved the increased floor area ratio and height to section seventeen point eight, eighty-eight for community benefits. We'll talk about that when we get there. Next, the standards for residential mixed use. This is on page twenty-four dash, sorry, twenty-four-nine. And there are new standards, similar to the design standards in other chapters, but just talking about placement, ground floor uses, building placement. We talked about the ground floor use already. And it says, "Primary streets shall be occupied by retail, restaurant, and personal service uses that generate pedestrian activities." This is guidance when they get to a mixed-use development. Councilmember Harland asked, "Is this specific enough?" In talking with our consultant, Ben Noble, he suggested that you do want to keep this open, so that there, as projects come in, you can evaluate them and make sure that they generate pedestrian activity. But by not getting too specific, you're not making this a land use table. It's, it's open enough that different developments can come in and can be evaluated for that standard. So we'd suggest leaving it as-is. Next is building placement. In looking at the building placement standard, there was a question about, "At all times, there shall be at least a 10 feet between building wall and edge of sidewalk." And we took a look at our front and street side yard, street setback requirements. And there's a 15-foot minimum from curb to street, and then it also requires 10 feet minimum for a sidewalk. And we would suggest deleting this line, I'm sorry, that red line was supposed to go right through the sentence, but just deleting the additional standard within building placement of 10 feet, because it's redundant, and it could confuse the developer. So we'd suggest removing sentence number two. Is that-
Just draw a line through sentence number two?
Yeah, sentence number two under building placement, for the 10 feet. It's not necessary. Moving on?
Okay, everybody okay? Okay, moving on.
Okay.
Building placement.
Forty-First Avenue, Capitola Road, the frontage areas of the mall. There's been discussion in the past about allowing to do a mixed-use commercial on those corridors. I find 10-foot very limiting. If you want to make that pedestrian area, you need to have more width there in that front. I think on major thoroughfares, where we have heavier traffic moving much faster, we really need to move the buildings back a little bit from there. So I'd say it should be more like 15 feet or 20 feet setback, and it allows for some open space in front of that building there, landscaping.
So that is exact, by crossing out this second line that says 10 feet-
Yeah.
The requirement that's on the lower half of the slide will stay, and that's that the building is at least 15 feet from the curb and street edge.
Oh, I'm sorry, where does it say that, Karen?
That goes back a couple pages to the setback requirement. So they'll be, they'll be required to follow the setback requirement of a minimum of 15 feet.
Okay.
We're dropping 10 to go to 15.
And we're getting rid of the 10-foot standard within the-
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Yes, that's good.
And that's the last item I have within this chapter. If you'd like me to move on, I could, but we've just-
How long do you think you spend on the next chapter?
Visitor serving, we're going to skip, we're going to skip the coastal sections till a specific coastal-focused meeting.
Oh, okay.
So we just got further. And-
I have a coastal zone overlay question. Should I hold that to later? Thank you.
Yes. We, I could go over the changes for plan development, if you'd like. That could be really quick.
You know, I think it would be good to at least open that, because we may struggle on plan development, but at least if we start it, maybe we could finish it, and then we'll wrap up after that. Would that be-
That sounds-
Reasonable?
So.
Going back, just on, on the height issue and commercial, we have CC and CR both at 40 feet, correct? That's our height limit?
Yes. Let me, let me make sure, but I believe-
Yeah, well, Katie's checking, I'm pretty sure it's 40 feet, and the current zoning ordinance allows somebody to come and ask for, in unspecified exception, to go above 40 feet. One of the changes that we have worked into the draft code is that we cap it at 50 feet.
Okay. That would, that would be fine, because if you add this up, you have a minimum retail floor space of 15. So that already gives you, with two floors above it, that's, that's 35 feet. So you would not have any pitch rougher, you wouldn't have any architectural detail. So if you allowed to go above that, then it would work. Okay.
Thank you for protecting architecture.
Okay.
Thank you.
What page are we on, Katie?
Would you like, so, plan development, starting-
Thirty-six-one?
So a quick summary. So, some of the changes that occurred here was the planning commission said, "Let's prohibit these from the single-family zone." They're tired of seeing these really tight developments that don't quite mesh with the R1 boxed in. And then, at fir, and then they also asked, previously, there was a five-acre minimum that didn't really apply, and none of our PDs really fit within that. And they've asked that we keep a minimum lot size of just about a half an acre, at 20,000 square feet or more. So when we brought it to you during issues and options, you actually asked us to take off that minimum site requirement altogether, but they didn't feel protected with letting any size development come in. So it's at about a half an acre. Process, this is where a change came into being. First, it was a two-step process of a preliminary plan that came in, and then the final plan development. Under the new process, we have a new chapter on the conceptual review process, so it outlines how a conceptual review is noticed and reviewed by planning commission and city councils. So that'd be the first step in a plan development, is they'd be required to do conceptual review. And it allows the applicant to know that it's a high-level review, and they're not getting any type of preliminary approval, which the old process was, you did have preliminary plans that were being decided, kind of decided upon, which was open to interpretation of what type of rights you had under that. So by keeping a conceptual review, it's still high-level. And then the second step to the process is to actually submit your plan development application, and that requires architectural and site review, the planning commission review with a recommendation, and then it goes on to city council. So clearer process for the applicant. Second, we updated the findings, so there's updated and new findings. There's a substantial public benefit that is required. So there's a list within that chapter of substantial public benefits, such as open space, improvements to the public realm, and then also a finding of superior development. So it's one of those kind of feel-good findings, but the Planning Commission cannot approve it without that finding being made. And that is my summary of plan development. So...
PV is in green, I guess?
Excuse me?
What I take is would be in green, number four. Page thirty-six, nine. So green building, does that also include solar inside that?
Mm-hmm.
Just a question. I'm just trying to, because I know we were trying to consider PD for that project on thirty-eight. That was larger than 20,000 square feet?
Yes.
That was like about an acre?
I want to say it was about, um... Thirty-four thousand square feet, is what I recall.
So 20,000 is, is the number, except for residential.
Right.
Well, I'm not crazy about PD. I have not seen it used very successfully before, and I know, Rich, you gave us a great explanation last time we went through this, of where it might possibly be necessary or needed or useful. So I want to keep my mind open to it, but, you know, I'd rather eliminate it, and if a project comes in that's going to be kind of a, a challenging project, and, but we love it, give it a variance. Give it a variance for density, or height, or setbacks, or, you know, whatever we want. But I don't like, it, in the past, it's squeezed too much on these properties. We've rezoned them to squeeze more on, and I don't think they're, they were particularly good projects. So, um, that's just my, my feeling about it.
Dennis?
I, I think it's needed in our zoning court because we have a Planning Commission staff that can make recommendations or, or, or kill any, any PD that comes through. So you always have discretion in the public process to, to take it out. But not every fit, every lot fits and project fits exactly to, um, to our zoning ordinance. And somewhere, you have to have some leniency without giving someone a multitudes of, of, of exceptions to the rule and, and variances from the rule. And that's what this allows to do. And, and yes, at times, it does allow for a higher density. But maybe that density really works in that community. So, so I, I like the idea that the community has the option of offering something, uh, that fits outside of the, the standard zoning ordinance. And that's what this, this zoning does.
John?
I've heard this discussion go back and forth. I have to admit, some of the, the areas that we've designed that are really dense, I don't particularly like. So I, I, I don't know what to say at this point, unless this should go on the list.
Let's put it on the list.
You could pass.
I, I could pass. Actually, I prefer to pass at this point. Yeah, thank you.
Michael?
I worry about PDs also, and yet they give us better projects than just going with the density allowed. We saw a lighter density in the PD on Forty-second than would have ordinarily been allowed. Whether he would have built it or not, I don't know.
When was the last time an apartment was built in Capitola?
No.
You know, that, I think he's bluff, totally bluffing.
I know, but I'll tell you, if that project came before us today, I'll bet you could be building apartments because the, the ROI on apartments in this county is out of control. There's, there's no better investment right now. You know, when, when they're getting the $2,600 for a two...
I know. I'd love to see somebody doing it. I don't see anybody building apartments, but...
That's what we're trying to do here. But I don't know. I can go either way. The exceptional development concept is wonderful. The PD is, can be dangerous. But we always, you know, we always have the ability not to allow the PD. It's always in our hands. No one can force us.
You know, Capitola Mall was a PD.
Yeah.
If you, if you want to see the rebuilding of Capitola Mall day, they will need a PD to do it. That's a, that's a zoning there that allows for, has the acreage, too. It meets, it meets those standards. As is Claire's. Claire's was all a PD. So Brown Bowl Branch, all those were, they're PDs. So not that we're going to rebuild Brown's Bowl Branch, but we certainly would love to see rebuilding of the mall.
It would be nice to leave this tool in the toolbox, but to restrict it like you were talking about, especially the conceptual review not being tacit approval.
I think it's a nail on the head. I think it's a tool in the toolbox. I don't want to take it away. I don't, you know, we haven't abused it. I think the last time we even remotely considered it was for the Senior Center on Thirty-eighth. Okay, and to me, that was, you know, we needed to tweak that to get that in there. Obviously, it never came to fruition because they couldn't develop on it, and we have what we have now. But I, I see it as a tool. I see it, we're going to go through the process. I would not want to take it out. I mean, it isn't like we're Scotts Valley. We've got lots of open space. We have very few sites left that we could even apply. I think they put some restrictions on it, 20,000 feet, not in a residential area. I think that protects 80% of the town. We're not going to abuse it, or that somebody's not going to abuse it. But I, I, the statement you made, Mike, was it's a tool in the toolbox, and I would definitely not want to take it away from us, so...
I'll keep it.
But let's, let's tighten it up a little bit.
I support keeping it. Why do you want to tighten it up? What do you want to do?
Well, I think you had some language on that, Rich.
Yeah, we, we added quite a bit of higher-level standards and findings to approve it now that weren't there before, the exception being the four-acre minimum lot size, which we always had to make exceptions for. But we went through it kind of with a fine-tooth comb with the Planning Commission. I think it's about as tight as we can get it. We're certainly open to suggestions if you see something missing.
Significantly tighter than before?
It is.
That's a good thing. I have no problem staying with that.
Yeah, and I think that the, the square footage was, was just logical because the four acres did not fit our, our town. I mean, it was ridiculous, so...
You know, what's interesting, the places that we would apply this, this zoning is places...
It's all right. It's all right.
Is places where we would want a higher density for housing. In other words, it, it seems to me that we've heard from community and discussion, Planning Commission, and Council that, that the Forty-first Avenue corridor is an area that we would be acceptable to a higher-density housing. That's where this applies. It doesn't apply in residential areas. It applies to that. And so if you want to give sections the rules and you want to create housing in our community, this is one, one tool we have to do that.
I think if we're being sensitive to community needs, we have to look at higher density. I mean, that's exactly what this is about. You advocated for that just a while ago.
Or you change your zoning to allow for it. You know, you change your rules to allow for it.
That's a good lead into the next chapter.
Well, I was going to get approval on this.
Residential overlays, we'll be talking about affordable housing next.
I was going to get approval on this. Are we okay with that? Is there a motion?
Yes, I saw move. Yeah, second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Onto the next, oh, wait a minute, we were going to wrap. Or did you want, I was going to wrap there after PD.
We can wrap it up.
I think that was a successful accomplishment with PD, so I'm willing to go out on a high note. Okay? Have we gone there?
Hold on, it's going to take some time.
So would you want to talk about the next meeting?
Yes.
I was just going to say, Mr. Mayor, our suggestion would be to continue this public meeting to your regularly scheduled, uh, meeting on September the eighth.
The twenty-fifth or the eighth? Oh, nothing on the twenty-fifth?
The, the twenty-fifth, the agenda, looks like we have enough other items on there already.
Sizable.
Okay. So we're thinking the eighth is probably our best opportunity that's in the near future.
Twenty, twenty-eighth?
Then we'll go to the...
It's a regular council meeting.
A regular council meeting?
Yeah.
Do we have time that evening to go to this?
At this point, looking at the longer-term projection that that agenda does, we think that there's some room on it for...
Or start at, go to six to seven and do this, and then start at seven for the council meeting?
I think we'll motivate ourselves to expedite that meeting.
Wait, wait, I'm confused. It's not the twenty-eighth.
I have to tell you that, that, you know, having any zoning on a regular meeting is ill-advised.
Yeah.
Considering what we went, what we got into tonight was perfect. But if there was a whole meeting, regardless of how short before this...
The intent on the eighth was to kind of focus in on parking a little bit in the Village. That's the one issue area that we've kind of got hung up with a little bit at the Planning Commission. They wanted to hear the council's direction on that. So it'd kind of be a single-topic zoning discussion on that evening.
I say let's go on the eighth. Well, you know, what, I don't suspect the agendas... You wouldn't suggest that if you thought it was going to be a full agenda, so I think we're going to move through it, and I don't think we're going to go much past where we are tonight. So why don't we do that? I, I think we can deal with the parking. It, it sounds like it's isolated. Let's move to the eighth. Good? Good? With that, we're adjourned.